Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call our meeting to order. Thank you for tuning into our virtual city council meeting tonight as we continue to follow public health guidance to avoid the spread of COVID-19. As a reminder, items will be taken in the order they are listed on the agenda. Before we get started, I wanted to briefly go over the public comment procedures for the meeting. All public comment on the consent calendar, matters of council interest, and items not on tonight's agenda will be taken at one time during item number five. Comments on other agenda items will be taken only when that item is called. You may use the raise hand feature on Zoom to speak. If you're joining the teleconference by phone, you may raise your hand by dialing star nine and star six to unmute your microphone when prompted. Please only raise your hand at the time that the item on which you are speaking is called. The allotted time for public comment may be adjusted if there are a large number of speakers. Council members Aguirre, Espinoza, Garnica, Gee, Ready, Vice Mayor Hale, and myself will participate by teleconference pursuant to Governor Newsom's executive order N-29-20. The city council chambers will not be open to the public. The meeting is being broadcast live to Redwood City residents on Astound broadband cable, channel 26, Comcast cable, channel 27, AT&amp;T U-verse, channel 99, and are streamed live via the city's website at www redwoodcity.org. As a reminder, we are now enabling video when city council members, city staff, and guest presenters are speaking. We ask for your patience with any technical difficulties. I'd now like to ask our city clerk if she would call the roll, please.
Thank you. Good evening. We'll start with Councilmember Aguirre.
Here.
Councilmember Espinoza Garnica.
Yeah.
Councilmember Gee.
Here.
Councilmember Ready.
Here.
Vice Mayor Hale.
Here.
And Mayor Howard.
Here.
And Councilmember Smith is unable to join us this evening.
Thank you very much, Ms. Aguilar. I would now like to ask Councilmember Ready if she will lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
Thank you, Mayor. Please join me in pledging allegiance to our flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very, very much, Councilmember Ready. Moving on to item number four, presentations and acknowledgements. Before we begin tonight's presentations, I'd like to take a moment to recognize Ramadan, the Muslim holy month of fasting, spiritual renewal, and helping those in need. This year Ramadan begins this evening, April 12th, lasting 30 days and ending at sundown on Tuesday, May the 11th. On behalf of the city of Redwood City, I want to send our warmest wishes to all the Muslims in our community and across the Bay Area. Ramadan, Morak. Mubarak, Mubarak. This holy time is also spent focusing on charitable work, increased time in spiritual worship, and donating money to feed those in need. Muslims contribute greatly to charitable organizations that help people from all faiths in the United States and around the world by providing medical assistance, family services, scholastic supplies, feeding the hungry, and providing essential services. Bay Area Muslims are a part of the fabric of our community that are recognized for their contribution, their rich cultural heritage, and wide diversity that they bring. This Ramadan, the Bay Area Muslim community reminds us that our freedom to worship benefits us all and should be celebrated. In this challenging time of uncertainty, let us come together and recognize that faith, good deeds, and diversity in worship is a beautiful thing, and let's support one another. Ramadan, Mubarak. Now I'd like to move on to item 4A, which is the swearing-in of newly appointed boards, committee, and commission members for our library board and Parks Recreation and Community Services Commission. This evening, we'll be swearing in our newest board members. At the last meeting of March 22nd, the city council appointed Desiree Bartley and Heather Liu to the library board, and Charlene Tinka Blackman to the Parks Recreation and Community Services Commission. They have joined us tonight to be sworn into office, and our city clerk will now administer the oath of office.
Thank you, Mayor Howard. At this time, I would like to ask our newly appointed board members to please turn on your video if you haven't already.
Um, I think I'm having problems turning on my camera.
That's Ms. Bartley. Okay. There you go.
Okay.
We can see you now. That looks great. All right. At this time, it is my honor to administer to you the oath of office. I will ask you to please raise your right hand with me and then repeat after me. I, please state your name.
I. Charlene Tinka Blackman.
I. Desiree Bartley.
I, Heather Liu.
Then you can all repeat at the same time. Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend.
Do solemnly swear. That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies foreign and domestic.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully.
And that I will well and faithfully.
And that I will well and faithfully.
Discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter.
Discharge the duties upon which I'm about to enter.
Discharge the duties upon which I'm about to enter.
Yeah, a little bit of a delay there, but congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Congratulations to all three of you. Thank you so much for volunteering your service, and we look forward to working with you. Keep that smile, okay? Thank you again for volunteering. Moving on now to item 4B, presentation on Pride and Beautification, our annual spring cleanup, COVID-style. We're going to be doing something a little different for Earth Week 2021. Community member Erin Callahan will now give a presentation on the Pride and Beautification Annual Spring Cleanup and Earth Week 2021. Erin?
Good evening, everybody. So I am one of the members of the Pride and Beautification Committee, and once COVID hit, we had to stop doing our two annual cleanups, one in the spring and one in the fall, and we decided we were going to try something a little bit different for this spring cleanup, which coincides with Earth Week. So we're actually doing a one-week cleanup. It's not really virtual. You do actually have to go out and pick stuff up, but we're asking people to get together with their social bubble or their family and do a little cleanup in their own neighborhood. So between April 19th through the 24th, the Pride and Beautification Committee encourages you to beautify an area in the city, and also, please post cleanup pictures on social media using the hashtag #EarthWeekRWC. You can also, the photos will also be posted on the Pride and Beautification Committee website, which is in the Redwood City website. So how to participate? Pick a day during Earth Week or dedicate them all to cleaning up litter in your neighborhood with your household or social bubble. Bring your own buckets, bags, gloves, or litter grabbers, reusable water bottles, and sunscreen to pick up litter. If you need gloves, bags, and/or litter grabbers for your team, you can just contact Public Works. The number is up on the screen right now, but it's 650-780-7464 to arrange a pickup time. Please designate bags for recycling and bags for trash, and record how many bags your team picks up and take a group photo. You can email the number of bags, the photo, and the most unusual items your group picked up to vshermon@redwoodcity.org. And please remember to post your pictures on social media and use the hashtag #EarthWeekRWC so we can share them. And also remember that we are still having the free compost giveaway that day on Saturday. Well, actually, on Saturday, April 24th, so the last day of the cleanup, and that's at 1400 Broadway. So the other thing is, if I remember correctly, and Diane, if you can confirm this, in your neighborhood, if you leave the trash collected at your local park, recology will be going through the parks to pick up on that Saturday. Is that right, Diane?
That will work. That's a good central location if people are close enough to it. And if they're not, we ask that you call and just report where it is located. If you can kind of gather them all together in maybe someone's driveway or someplace that's safe to leave them so nobody trips, but just call and let us know where it needs to be picked up because recology will be coming around the neighborhood. But if you do live near a park, that's perfect. That's perfect.
Okay, that's all I have to say, and I hope a lot of people get out there and do some cleaning up and get out in the beautiful weather.
Absolutely. Thank you, Erin. Thank you so much. I wanted to say that our own Shen Uen Temple has donated money once again to help us with this project. It's going to be a little different. My husband and I will be out on Wednesday, the 21st, in the morning around 10 o'clock over at Little River Park. If you would like to come, a small group would like to come, please wear your mask. We'll maintain six feet social distancing, and we'll be wearing gloves, but if you'd like to join us, we'd love to see you. So I hope that people will take the opportunity, and please post pictures so that we can celebrate cleaning up the environment during Earth Week. Thanks, Erin.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to item 4C, presentation by the Bay Area Water Supply and Conservation Agency, otherwise known as BASCA, and our representative Barbara Pierce is going to speak on the Bay Delta Plan.
Thank you very much. Good evening, Mayor. Hi. Good evening, Mayor Howard, Vice Mayor Hale, Councilmembers Aguirre, Espinoza, Garnica, Gee, and Ready. As Diane mentioned, I'm Barbara Pierce, the BASCA board member appointed by Redwood City. Tonight, I would like to give you a brief introduction to BASCA, the Bay Delta Plan, its impact on Redwood City, and what's next regarding this issue. Next slide, please. Yeah, let's see. There you go. So what is BASCA? Established by the California Legislature to plan for and acquire supplemental water supplies, encourage water conservation, and the use of recycled on a regional basis. This graphic shows the water suppliers, 26 in three counties, and the customers who are dependent upon this regional water system. All 1.8 million residents, over 40,000 businesses and community organizations, and all of them rely on the San Francisco Hetch Hetchy Regional Water System. Next slide. This is the San Francisco Regional Water System, which has gravity flow from Yosemite on the right of the graphic to Fisherman's Wharf on the far left. It's a very high-quality supply, which requires no filtration and minimal treatment. Historically, this supply is very reliable, except during extended drought periods. And you can note the Hetch Hetchy reservoir picture on the bottom right where the water is stored in Yosemite Valley. Next slide. BASCA's goals are a reliable supply of high-quality water at a fair price, and it is this concern about a reliable supply of water that is the focus of BASCA's current efforts. Responding to the new state regulations, which result in significant water supply impacts to the regional water system and Redwood City in particular. Specifically, it is the impact of the Bay Delta Plan, which is the topic of my update tonight. Next slide. Let's talk about the Bay Delta Plan at the big-picture level. The State Water Resources Control Board, or the State Board, establishes water quality objectives to protect beneficial uses of water in the Bay Delta, which includes, in the graphic, the San Francisco Bay, Sacramento, San Joaquin Delta Estuary. Beneficial uses include fish, wildlife, the environment, and water users. This adopted Bay Delta Plan Phase 1 requires significantly increased Twalomee River in-stream flows. The Twalomee River, you see on the graphic, is part of the regional water system, and you see it on the right in the graphic circled in red. This plan, Phase 1, would result in significant water supply impacts to customers that rely on the water system, including Redwood City. Next slide. Just briefly about the Bay Delta Plan. The plan has the water quality objectives to protect the fish, wildlife, environment, and water users. The plan is extremely complicated, detailed, dependent upon scientific studies, and has raised differing opinions, and involves multiple stakeholders with legal water rights. Additionally, the plan has been a long time coming. Note on the slide the 2009 initiation of the update and the 2018 adoption, but it is still not implemented. But its implementation would have serious impacts on waters. So how is this being addressed? Next slide. The State Board has a framework that includes voluntary agreements and an alternative that has been suggested for Phase 1 Plan, the Twalomee River Voluntary Agreement, or the TRVA. The water users, including two irrigation districts, San Francisco Public Utilities Commission and BASCA, have long had serious concerns regarding the water supply impacts if the Bay Delta Phase 1 Plan is implemented, and have provided the TRVA as an alternative to the State Board. At this date, the State Board has not reviewed the alternative or accepted any voluntary agreements for any of the rivers involved. This is of concern, though at the state level, there are ongoing discussions about the voluntary agreements with the State Board. BASCA supports those discussions and is following them closely. So this brings us to what is the concern for Redwood City regarding this plan? Next slide. The impacts on Redwood City and the region are clear and critical. Redwood City needs a reliable source of water for current and future residents and to fulfill its goals for housing, jobs, and development. Redwood City staff has been following all of this closely and will be presenting more information to you during the Urban Water Management Plan discussion. So in closing, this is a critical situation for Redwood City and merits your council's continued attention. I've avoided going into the deep details about the Bay Delta Plan, but have given you an overview and its relationship to Redwood City. BASCA is working on your behalf and with your staff and will continue to do so at the state level with the San Francisco Public Utilities Commission, the State Board, and others. Mayor Howard has been briefed, as has Melissa Diaz Stevenson, and recently, Mayor Howard attended a meeting of the Bay Area Council where BASCA CEO Nicola Sancola presented regarding the Bay Delta Plan. Ms. Sancola and I will also be available during your April 26th meeting, and I'll be back with updates for you as the situation changes. Thank you. Are there any questions?
Thank you very much. And Ms. Pierce, a former mayor of Redwood City, you have been an excellent representative for us at BASCA, and I'd like to ask you the question. The Urban Management, Urban Water Management Plan, is that what we're going to be doing on the 26th of April? Or is that at another time? Maybe I should ask Ms. Diaz that question.
Thank you, Mayor. No, on the 26th, we'll be talking about the housing element and plans for, preparing for sufficient housing in the future. The Urban Water Management Plan will discuss in June.
Thank you. Melissa, I think we're having a problem with your audio, so we'll just need to check that.
Thank you.
Yeah, there's some kind of a reverb going on there. So in the meantime, I'd like to ask, Ms. Pierce, I'd like to ask, what can we do in the meantime to be of assistance here?
Well, I think that you and your staff are already working on a letter that had come to you at the urging of the Bay Area Council, and I think that that's very helpful because it's important that the state and the State Board understand the impact of not having enough water or having water concerns, especially in the way that it relates to the needs for cities to guarantee water for their residents and housing and development. And with A-BAG and the increased housing numbers, this will be of great importance to you. So I think following up with the letter that was urged by the Bay Area Council is certainly important. And then, as we learn more about the discussions at the state level, it may be important for Redwood City and the council to send a letter at that point encouraging the State Board to go ahead and evaluate this alternative because, like an EIR process for a city, they are the body that would review it and indicate whether it will meet all the needs that they need. So that would be the next step that we would ask you to take, but that will be a little bit down the line.
Thank you. And I know we were talking about the letter, the immediate need for that letter, and I think we have taken care of that. In light of the fact that we have been given new RENA numbers, which are housing numbers that A-BAG expects you to comply with, every city has been given them. This is really kind of a startling and concerning event. And the fact that it takes so long for them to get moving on things is really concerning because time is very important and water is so precious. We need to be moving forward and preserving our water. So keep us updated and come back anytime with an update.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Take care.
Good evening.
We'll now move on to item number five, which is public comment on the consent calendar, matters of council interest, and on items not on the agenda. So at this time, we will take public comment on these items, the consent calendar, matters of council interest, and items not on the agenda. If you wish to make public comment at this time, please click the raise hand button on Zoom to be recognized. And if you're joining by phone, please press star nine to raise your hand and star six to unmute yourself when prompted to speak. In order to see how many speakers we have for general public comment, I'd like to ask that everyone who wishes to speak on a consent calendar item, matters of council interest, or an item not on the agenda, could you please raise your hand now? This is for general public comment. I have five hands at this time. Give it another bit, just to be sure that we've captured everyone. Okay, we have five members of the public who wish to speak. The last speaker is Johanna Rasmussen. And each speaker will be given two minutes to speak. Any speakers who queue up after Ms. Rasmussen will be asked to email your comment to the city council at council@redwoodcity.org. I will now call names in the order that your hands were raised, two at a time. The timer will begin when you begin speaking. It's okay for your comments to be brief, and it's okay to state you agree with a previous speaker. My first speaker is Ryan, and my second speaker is Pat 3RD.
Hey, I would like to comment specifically on the police data that was emailed to residents. The only police data we have been afforded at a glance so far concerns police staffing, demographics, and promotions. Meanwhile, we have received no updates on the real issue at hand, budgets, arrests, and citations, use-of-force stats, and requests for service. These last four issues are of primary concern for residents who wish to contribute to the budget town hall meeting on April 22nd. How can residents contribute to the budget meeting if we do not have budget information from our police department? Many residents, such as myself, know that the issue with our police department is not one of demographics. The problem is with the institution and practice of policing itself. Studies show that a diversified police force does not treat minority populations any better than an all-white police force would. The community needs to know a breakdown of the police budget and other statistics in order to know how to best move forward with de-scoping and defunding the police. It is not okay that these data resources were not made available to residents before the town hall meeting. The expected ETA of this data is in May, and that is simply not acceptable. Thank you.
Thank you. My next speaker is Pat 3RD, and then Rona Gundrum.
Thank you. I'd like to raise two points. The first is that the Equity Committee and the Equity Plan seem to be becoming the latest excuse for delaying action on the obvious. Boiling the ocean is not necessary in order to discover that there are fish. An Equity Plan is not required before it's already clear that in over 15 years, the Redwood City Police Department has been unable to find a black person more than one to be a sergeant or higher in its staff. Shame. Pathetic. Absolutely incredible. Second point I want to make is this meeting is about zoning. I want to set some history that zoning was not invented in Bay Area. It had been a nationwide thing for centuries. Nearly everyone dreams of a single-family dwelling, which is why so many of them were built and still desirable. It is the price that is the issue in order to gain the financial equity that rising home values brings to the American public, those who are not Wall Street investors or any other such sort of money-for-paper life. Raising wages, however, is the necessary condition for people to save money and to make a down payment and have the credit rating necessary to buy a home. On this point, I also want to raise support for the raising of wages for the workers at grocery stores. Thank you.
My next speaker is Rona Gundrum, and then call-in user one.
Good evening, Mayor Howard and city council members. I am calling in this evening to encourage the council to vote no on the hazard pay ordinance. We are all eternally grateful to the essential grocery store and other workers.
Excuse me, Ms. Gundrum. That item is coming up on the agenda, and that's going to be under hazard pay. I'm afraid that's where we're going to take public comment for that particular item. This is for public comment on. that's where we're going to take public comment for that particular item. This is for public comment on items not on the agenda.
Oh, I'm, I'm sorry, Mayor Howard. I will stay on and raise my hand again later.
Great. Thank you so much. My last speaker is call-in user number one.
Hi, good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Thank you. Hi, it's, um, good evening, council, um, and, um, city staff. My name's Marcelina Luna, a resident of Redwood City. And I would like to make a public comment on an event being hosted by the Chamber of Commerce of Sammatt Hill County on this coming Wednesday, April the fourteenth, where they are charging a twenty-five-dollar registration fee. And the guest speakers are you, Mayor Diane Howard, Vice Mayor Giselle Hale, and Supervisor Warren Slogan. When I asked on Instagram why there was a, a fee to listen to our elected officials, Vice Mayor Hale replied that the entire state of the city was delivered at our city council meeting back in March fifteenth, and that it could be reviewed for free, and that this was the recap to the chamber members. So I just wanted to know, why do our elected officials need to be giving them a recap? And why not play the presentation that the public received? Why the special treatment? It is unethical for a leftist organization to profit from public officials making a presentation. The Chamber of Commerce is a pay-to-play organization. Their PAC, top three contributions in twenty twenty went to standing with conservatives, Mitch McConnell, and David Perdue. I'm asking that our elected officials do not engage with organizations that charge fees for their benefit. Unless, if this is a common practice, then any business should be allowed the same access to our elected officials. Please reconsider attending this event. We're making it free for everyone to attend. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. That's the end of my public speakers under public comment. Thank you all for your comments. If you were not able to provide public comment tonight, please email your comments to the council at council@redwoodcity.org. At this time, all public speakers can stay on the Zoom call or continue to follow the meeting through the live broadcast, either on the city's website at www redwoodcity.org, or on cable television on local channel twenty-six, Comcast Channel twenty-seven, or AT&amp;T U-verse Channel ninety-nine. We're now moving on to item number six, the consent calendar. These are items that are routine in nature and are approved in one motion. And so I'd like to ask if there's a council motion to approve the consent calendar, or if council member wants to discuss a certain item.
I move to approve.
Second, Espinoza Garnica.
Okay, motion to approve by Councilmember Aguirre, and seconded by Councilmember Espinoza Garnica. I'd like to turn it over to the city clerk for a roll call.
Thank you. Councilmember Aguirre.
Yes.
Councilmember Espinoza Garnica.
Yes.
Councilmember G.
Yes.
Councilmember Ready.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hale.
Yes.
And Mayor Howard.
Yes.
The motion passes with six votes. Councilmember Smith is absent this evening.
Thank you. I'll now read all the items that we have just approved. The amendment number two to the agreement with Cherry Road Technologies to implement a new financial and human capital management, or HCM, software and services as part of the city's Enterprise Resource Planning Replacement Program. The final map and associated agreements for the development of one-twenty El Camino Real by One Twentieth LLC. Easement agreements for the Bayfront Canal and the Atherton Channel Flood Resilience and Ecosystem Restoration Project. Waive second reading and adopt zoning ordinance amendments to comply with state law and reduce barriers to childcare by increasing locations where childcare is allowed and streamlining the childcare review process. Waive the second reading and adopt the zoning ordinance amendments related to housing, accessory outdoor commercial uses, permit applicability, residential open space requirements, non-conforming structures, and other zoning revisions to address changes in state law and support process improvements. Approve minutes of March twenty-second, twenty twenty-one city council meetings, and approve claims and checks from April twelfth, twenty twenty-one through April twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-one, and the usual and necessary payments through April twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-one. Moving on now to item number seven, public hearing, seven A, zoning ordinance amendments related to accessory dwelling units, also known as ADU. Our Community Development and Transportation Director, Mark Munzer, will introduce the item, and Senior Planner Apollo, Apollo Rojas will give the presentation. Mr. Munzer?
Good evening, Mayor Howard and members of city council. If we could go to the next slide, please. On, um, March eighth, city council passed a motion, seven to zero, to set a height limit for detached ADUs and detached ADUs within the rear yard setback at twenty feet. Staff is here tonight to confirm that the council also intended to apply that ADU height limit to multifamily zone lots, similarly as the motion on single-family lots. A primary intent, though, for tonight's discussion is to review certain privacy and neighborhood impact standards or regulations that are included in the city's twenty nineteen ADU ordinance and staff's recommendation on these requirements. Staff have provided three ordinance up, three ordinance options, which are displayed on the slide, and they are in your staff report, and they will, will provide a more overview throughout the course of this presentation. Next slide, please. The city council questions, which we'll display now and at the end of the staff presentation, I would reference the second bullet point, as I noted, about direction on ADU height limits for multifamily zone lots, and if they should reflect the same as single-family zone lots. And the balance of the questions that you will see on the screen refer whether to adopt second-story and privacy regulations that, as previously noted, are included in the current twenty nineteen ordinance. Staff recommends including privacy and neighborhood, uh, privacy regulations for the prohibition of second-floor balconies, limiting the placement of exterior stairwells when immediately adjacent to nearby properties, and requiring opaque windows on an ADU's second floor. Staff does not recommend applying the previous five hundred and seventy-six square-foot limit above the ground floor as two-story ADUs would no longer be allowed solely above garages, which was the basis for the very, for the previous square-footage regulation, which is based on a typical twenty-four by twenty-four-foot two-car garage. Similarly, staff recommends removing the eight-foot second-story plate height requirement as ADUs can now, or in the future, be built to twenty feet tall. And we believe that such a restriction on the, uh, the size or the height of the second floor could potentially restrict ADU design options. Also for your consideration, and as shown on the slide, is the Attachment B ordinance from the staff report, which would include all of those massing and privacy regulations. And Attachment C is included in the staff report, which would not apply any of these regulations to future ADUs. I will now turn over the presentation to Senior Planner. And he will provide you with more information on the massing and privacy regulations, as well as on the staff recommendations. We'll both be here for questions following Mr. Rojas's presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Munzer, Mayor Howard, council members. Good evening to members of the public joining us. Uh, my name is Apollo Rojas. I'm a senior planner with the city, and I'll be going over staff's recommendations. So the twenty nineteen ADU ordinance update, um, that could be kind of categorized into two buckets, uh, massing regulations and privacy regulations. So staff is recommending retaining the existing privacy regulations from this twenty nineteen ADU ordinance update. Now would include prohibiting balconies, limiting exterior stairways adjacent to neighbors, and requiring opaque or clear-story windows adjacent to neighbors. So the first photo on the left shows a smaller second-story balcony. These balconies and upper-story decks, uh, these spaces do not count towards ADU square footage, so they're, they act as a sort of bonus space and open space. And the city currently prohibits, uh, roof decks on, on similar accessory buildings. So in order to be consistent with our existing standards and to promote, uh, second-story ADUs while retaining, uh, privacy mitigations, staff is recommending retaining our regulations to prohibit balconies on ADUs. The next recommendation would be to prohibit exterior stairways when, uh, facing the adjacent neighbor on the side or rear property line. So an uncovered exterior stairway, uh, facing, uh, interior to the site would still be allowed. And fully enclosed stairways, uh, those would also still be allowed up to four feet. Uh, we're talking about exterior stairways, uh, facing the rear and side of property lines that are being prohibited. So an example of that, looking at the photo in the middle, that would be like a small exterior stairway. This is just large enough to meet code, but some stairways include extended decks, uh, similar to balconies. And similar to that requirement, this limitation on exterior, exterior stairways would, uh, be to mitigate some of those privacy concerns while still allowing for uh, second-story ADUs. And lastly, the next recommendation would be to retain, uh, the requirement for clear-story or opaque windows when facing the immediately adjacent side or rear neighbor. So the top right image shows, uh, clear-story windows. These tend to be located near the ceiling or roof line to allow for light and air to pass into the unit while not creating any impacts for the unit. And on the bottom right, we have opaque windows. Some people refer to them as frosted windows, but there's a number of different types of opaque designs out there nowadays. And this still would allow for egress. This still would allow for operable windows, uh, but it would be opaque in order to mitigate some of those privacy impacts from having structures located, uh, four feet from the side and rear yard. And I, I'd like to repeat, if I didn't already, that these regulations are limited to the second story. So ground-floor decks, ground-floor windows, ground-floor open space, those are still allowed. Uh, and that's because these privacy impacts are not as severe on the ground floor and are addressed mainly by the city's seven-foot-tall, uh, fence height allowance. Uh, next slide, please. And this next staff recommendation, we talked about the two buckets, the massing, the privacy. This would be under the massing, uh, kind of bucket. And this would be to remove, uh, the first massing regulation from that twenty nineteen ordinance. That would be removing the size limit for ADU square footage limits to the second story. This would be for detached ADUs. Uh, so as Mr. Munzer said, that square footers limit is five hundred and seventy-six square feet. The way that was designed was that your typical, uh, garage is twenty-four feet by twenty-four feet. You multiply those together, it's five hundred and seventy-six square feet. And the second-story square-footage requirement is no longer required for detached ADUs as, uh, two-story ADUs may be constructed as standalone ADUs, so. And they're no longer required to be constructed above a garage as they were back in twenty nineteen. So allowing for standalone two-story ADUs allows for more equal distribution of square footage on each floor. And it alleviates some of the need to construct the entirety of the square footage, uh, above a garage or on the second floor. So, uh, for example, the ordinance, uh, that we adopted in March eighth that we voted on, uh, that included a lot coverage exemption, uh, for ADUs in the rear yard. And so that would incentivize ground-floor construction. So, for example, detached garages would not be exempt from lot coverage. However, ADUs would be exempt from, uh, the lot coverage requirement. So thinking about those in conjunction, the overall intent is to build incentives to construct on the ground floor and to provide flexibility of options for ADUs. Next slide, please. And then the second half of the massing, uh, requirements, uh, would be to limit, uh, second-story plate heights to eight feet. Staff is recommending to remove that requirement as well as it's no longer necessary, as the maximum height for detached ADUs is limited now to twenty feet. That's the total measurement from the, uh, from gray to the peak of the roof. And this diagram shows a sectional drawing, a sectional drawing. Just imagine if you cut a building in half and, and sort of looked inside. It shows the typical plate height of each floor. In this case, that'd be eight feet on the ground floor, eight feet on the second floor. And there'd be a round of foot for the foundation, around a foot for the space in between stories. And what you have left is around three to four feet for the slope or a pitch of a roof. So staff recommends, uh, striking both of those twenty nineteen massing requirements, both the limit to square footage on the second story and the, to eliminate this eight-foot, uh, plate height maximum. And, and the intent again is to provide more flexibility for ADU design. Next slide, please. So here again are city council questions for your consideration tonight. Uh, we'll leave these up during city council deliberation. I'm not available for any questions. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Rojas, and thank you, Mr. Munzer. Are there any clarifying questions from city council at this time before we open it up to public comment? Seeing none. I'll now open the public hearing. In order to see how many speakers we have, I ask everyone who wishes to speak, if you could please raise your hand now. And this would be speaking on this item alone, which is the accessory dwelling units. At this time, I have seven hands raised. Give opportunity for anyone coming in. This is item seven A, accessory dwelling units. If you would like to speak under public comment, please raise your hand now. So at this time, I have seven speakers, and my last speaker. I have eight speakers in under the wire, and, uh, my last speaker is Emil. Okay. If any speakers queue up after Emil, I'd like to ask them if they would send their comments to www.council@redwoodcity.org. Each speaker will be given two minutes to speak. I'll call names in the order that hands were raised, two at a time, and the timer will begin when you begin speaking. It's okay for your comments to be brief, and it's okay to state that you agree with the previous speaker. My first speaker is Johanna Rasmussen, and my second speaker is Isabella Chu.
Mayor Howard, you actually had called me during public comment and then failed to, uh, queue me up during the time, so I'd like to give my public comment, please.
Certainly, you can do that. Your hand did go away, I have to say. It went away, and it didn't appear again until after we had finished and moved on to the next item. So I apologize, but it just, it happens sometimes, technical difficulties. So I'll give you an extra minute. I'll give you three minutes total.
Thank you. So as many of you may know, the Palencia family, longtime residents of Redwood City, were involved in a horrible car accident Saturday afternoon. And sadly, every member of the household was in the automobile when they were struck by a suspected drunk driver. Lourdes and her three children, Paula, Yvonne, and Manuel, were in the vehicle. Lourdes was airlifted to Stanford Hospital, and her children remain hospitalized in very critical condition. Her daughter Yvonne is in surgery as I speak. Lourdes came to Redwood City from Honduras in search of a better life, and she has worked for the past twenty-five years cleaning houses so she could support her three children and give them, keep them here in Redwood City where they would have the best opportunity to have a good life. And yesterday morning, a GoFundMe account was started for the family under Redwood City Family Car Crash Survivor Support. And with the help of Michael Leahy, the Redwood City Firefighters Union, the staff at Woodside High School, and the Zooks founder, Tim Kentley Clay, and our amazing community, we've already raised seventy-seven thousand dollars to support the family. But the needs of this family are great, and we ask the community, if they pray, to keep the Palencias in your prayers as the challenges reveal themselves in the days and months ahead. We will be posting updates. We will be posting updates both on their condition and ways the community can help the Palencias on our Facebook, Nextdoor, and on the Farm Hill Neighborhood Association website, farmhillneighborhood.com. Thank you very much.
Thank you. My next speaker is Isabella Chu and my speaker after that is Ian W. And my condolences to the family. Thank you so much for speaking up about that. Isabella Chu, then Ian W.
Great. Thank you, council, and thank you for revisiting the ADU ordinance. So first of all, obviously, a 20-foot cap is better than the previous de facto ban on second story ADUs, although it still doesn't give equal rights to renters as it does to homeowners. And one concern I have is when when we talk about things like balconies, windows, et cetera. If you're a homeowner, there doesn't appear to be any real concern about being able to see into the neighbor's yard, being able to stand in your home, being able to see outside of your home. But we've applied a very different standard to rental housing where, you know, it's considered a threat if if they can see outside their home or if they can have a window. And I think we really have to think about how we think about rental housing. You know, half of Redwood City residents rent. You know, they are ordinary, hardworking people with good jobs. It's just hard to come up with the, you know, several hundred thousand dollars to purchase a home these days. So when we think about things like requiring renters to have opaque or clear story windows and we don't require those of homeowners who have a second story, I think that's quite discriminatory. When we say that a renter can't have a balcony or or a landing that that can see into the neighbor's yard, but we have no qualms about a homeowner having those things, that's also discriminatory. And so this notion that renters should somehow, A, you know, not have equal quality of housing that that owners have, I think, is problematic. And and I think we really should revisit allowing renters to have a full height if if that's possible. So, you know, again, 20 feet is better than none. No second story, but I think we still have some pretty discriminatory approaches.
Thank you. My next speaker is Ian W. and then Michael Solario.
Hi. My name is Ian. I am a resident of Redwood City. In fact, I rent a second story above garage unit. And I just want to say that I think that the council should be as unrestricted as possible in allowing perm, in in allowing these units to be built. We need, we need to provide as many affordable and accessible housing solutions as possible to people. And we should make them places that people can actually be comfortable living. I was very happy to hear the previous speaker mention things such as the fact that this would effectively mean that renters are more restricted in what kinds of homes they can have. For example, if our unit was built after this proposed resolution passed, we wouldn't be able to see out of any of our of our windows. And just in general, I think that we should be placing as few restrictions on the construction of these ADUs as possible so that we can have as much housing as possible and help people be able to live and remain and live happily in our city. Thank you.
Thank you. Michael Solario and then Brandon Enriquez.
Hey, y'all. My name is Michael Solario. And thank you all for bringing me on. Thanks for your work, council and mayor. And I want to support what my neighbors Isabella and Ian both said, especially what Ian said, that I feel like restriction should be as light and as easy as possible so that these new units could be built as quickly as possible because for every unit that's not built or units that are like being postponed, people are going to go out on to the street. They're going to be kicked out of their homes because especially during COVID right now, the housing crisis is really bad, prices are going, prices are still like super high while jobs, jobs are at an all-time low. So please, I, I really hope, y'all, I really hope that you make it easy for people to create new housing and to move in, especially those of you who have run on housing platforms. I'm, I'm really looking forward to y'all stepping up and advocating for housing to be as quickly and easily created and move into. Thank you.
Thank you. My next speaker is Brandon Enriquez and then Ryan.
I live in Redwood City. I'm a renter. And the apartments next to me and houses near me have balconies. And I think that the staff recommendations are don't make sense and I would encourage the council to to pass this ordinance without these restrictive recommendations, particularly like the opaque windows, like I don't know why we want to hold renters to a different standard than homeowners. I find these these restricting recommendations very elitist and classist. And I would expect renters to have the right to good quality of home, same as homeowners. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. My next speaker is Ryan and then Jordan Grimes.
I agree with the speaker before me, Brandon, about the balcony requirements. I urge the city council to reduce restrictions and requirements for ADUs as much as possible. ADUs allow for much-needed affordable housing to be built in our city. We are in a housing crisis and ADUs help people who work here and go to school here and even people who grew up here find a place to live. Privacy concerns of the city's wealthy residents should not come before increasing the supply of housing to meet our people's needs. Thank you.
Thank you. My next speaker is Jordan Grimes and then Emil.
Yes. Good evening, council, honorable mayor. My name is Jordan Grimes. I'm here speaking both as an individual and as a lead member of Housing Advocacy Group Peninsula for Everyone. As in past meetings, I'm here in strong support of making ADUs as easy to build as possible. ADUs are really the lowest hanging fruit of housing production. They're built by individuals generally for family members such as aging parents or children who can't afford the ever-rising rents of the peninsula. When they are rented out, they're almost always rented at the low market rate, as can be seen on Craigslist right now. As far as the ordinance options before you tonight, I actually want to encourage you to eliminate the height limits on second story ADUs altogether. I can't see a way where they do anything but inhibit the production of ADUs overall. I don't love the privacy restrictions. I would note that blinds are a neat invention and I'd recommend those concerned about privacy procure some. But the height limits are a more important impediment. As staff alluded to, a 20-foot height limit without exceptions for roof styles and pitches will result in a lot of completely flat roofs. I know design is important to a number of people, so that's something to consider tonight. And I support the staff recommendation on this. While ADUs certainly won't solve the housing crisis themselves, they can play an important role if we allow them to. So I'd like to thank council for walking back the previously restrictive ordinance and urge you to focus and prioritize people who need housing rather than those who already have it. Thanks so much for your time.
Thank you. My final speaker is Emil.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Hi, um, before I begin my comment, I first would like to thank the current city council for overturning the vote on ADUs the previous council implemented last fall. I know affordable housing is is and was a foundational component of many of our council members' campaigns. And their current and their current and continued dedication to this cause has not gone unnoticed. Unfortunately, affordable housing is still an issue for many residents of our city. I have had multiple friends and associates move away because they could not afford to remain here and we're losing too many friends, family, and community members because of skyrocketing rents, gentrification, and limited housing. I understand that this won't entirely fix the issue, but ADUs can and will certainly help. So I urge the council to make their construction as easy as possible. Once again, I'd like to thank our city council members for their continued support of ADUs. Let's make Redwood City an example to follow in the Bay Area when it comes to affordable housing.
Thank you. That was my last speaker, and so if there are no objections, I'll now close the public hearing and open it up to council discussion. Who would like to begin? Does anyone have questions for staff or anything they would like to have clarified? Council member Espinoza Garnica will be first and then council member Aguirre.
Hi, so I really appreciate, first off, the comments that were made. Essentially, I think everyone kind of spoke to the same concerns I have. A lot of the restrictions, a lot of the prohibitions for privacy reasons seem too restrictive. And I would like to see the same type of generosity offered to homeowners with the discretion of design to these ADU developments because at the end of the day, they're on the property of homeowners. And, you know, I don't really think there's a valid argument beyond just people feeling as if they're being viewed from their backyard. I think there's a lot of reasons to have such things as balcony because they offer space. You know, on second story units, you know, you don't really have your own personal space or outside space. There's not many housing developments that have communal space that's open. So I really would like the benefits for folks like balconies because they can sit outside and relax and not be cooped up all the time. I think also the opaque windows also have a claustrophobic feeling as well all the time. I don't think it should be basically enforced as if they have to do it. I know that there is some concern, mostly from more affluent residents really, that they are going to have people obstructing their view. But, you know, they're building mansions already, so that's far more obstructive than anything else. And again, what's far more constructive is also a housing crisis. So I think we really ought to limit the type of restrictions we have. So with that, I don't think we should have a limit on heights either. I think they're arbitrary. I think there's a lot of negotiating because people don't want to see more tenants in the neighborhood because their their property value may go down with their investment and their housing. And that's why I'm such a big advocate for social housing because we have to stop the whole commodifying of housing. People see housing as an investment, like, oh, if I invest in a housing, I'll be set. Right? Because it'll keep going and maybe I'll sell it. But housing shouldn't be seen that way. Housing should not be seen as a commodity. Even today, efforts to try and make private like private homeownership a priority, they're really futile and very surface level. So we really need to create more housing ownership, or I mean, sorry, more social housing and let those who are homeowners at least construct housing for more folks. And as much as possible as they can really because the crisis is so huge. We have, I get lots of emails about how there's homeless people in our, in our, in our streets. And it's like, wow, like, well, we should really invest in anti-poverty measures because, you know, creating more homeowners isn't really the answer. It's like fighting poverty is the answer. So I think we ought to do something like the attachment C and try and also to take off the height restrictions in general. I would like for folks to discuss that because I just think it's like an elitist position, honestly, between homeowners and renters. And I feel like there's too many restrictions for renters on what's livable for them when homeowners can build as much as they want if they can afford it. So thank you.
Council member Aguirre and then council member Ready. Thank you. And thank you, Mark, for bringing this back. And I know the importance of this, we've seen it many, many times, previous council, this council. But I think what we really needed all along is a lot of clarity and we didn't have it. And it shouldn't fall on the owner that's building it to try to figure it out or to the planning staff to try to figure out what we meant by our policy. So I'm glad that we're cleaning it up. But I'm just a little confused or maybe not, it's not clear to me. Where did we end? Where did we land on roof pitch? And I know that was one of the slides. Because I know, I think that was a little restrictive as well. And I remember you showing us some different models like from Belmont and others that had the roof pitch where, you know, if you're tall or if you just want to stand up, it was just, it was too limited, too restrictive. Can you share with us where you, we landed on that to make sure it's clear?
I'm sorry, can you hear me?
Yes. Yes.
Sorry. So where we ended on March 8th was a 20-foot height limit. So it, we did present options from different communities, one of which was Belmont, which makes some accommodations for the pitch or the slope of the roof. But where we landed was 20 feet height. So that could be, you know, a flat roof detached ADU that allows for additional height on the second floor living area. Or it could be, you know, eight feet and eight feet with the one foot for the foundation in between and for a three-foot typically roof pitch. But where you ended was 20 feet. Certainly, we could, you know, have that discussion this evening if you felt like some
Yeah, because
accommodation needed to be made for roof pitch. My apologies.
Yes, definitely. I think that we should look at the difference about the roof pitch. If it's a flat, it shouldn't be the same as if it's a pitch feet, a roof that's pitched. They shouldn't have the same for obvious reasons. So I would like us to look at that a little closer. Mr. Munzer, you had a slide earlier. He did. And if you put that up, I think that would be real helpful.
Sure. I don't control that, so then, and just like that, you do, mayor, so there you go.
Magic, magic. Thank you. That was really helpful because this was so helpful for me to understand exactly what we were talking about. So thank you.
Yeah, so this would be the image where a flat roof would accommodate, as I was speaking to a taller second floor living space versus a pitched roof where you'd have to make that, as proposed, have to make that accommodation and the second floor space would typically, and again, these are typical building sections, but typically be limited to eight feet.
Yeah, but if you look at the picture itself, the guy on the right looks a little bit shorter. And it looks, therefore, he looks comfortable. But if you look on the one on the left, there's a lot more space. So I'd like us to look at the pitch roof to have that flexibility to be as high as the one that is, you know, the inside space is high. Obviously, the pitch roof is going to be a little bit higher, but I'd like to see us look at that so that they're pretty equal as far as the inside space. Because, yeah, he's standing in the middle, but if he's standing on the corner, he's going to definitely, or she, because we have tall women too, it's going to bump her head.
Now, council member, I've looked at these images a million times. I've never noticed a slightly shorter, so thank you. That was not intentional by any means. So we, I, you know, certainly want to hear from all of your colleagues, but we do have language that that could potentially accommodate.
And and I think it's very important that we are clear. You know, and, you know, when you look at them, yeah, they look pretty equal. The ones at the bottom do, but then when you look at the top, it's not. Yes, there is the eight foot, but there's more space moving forward because we did move to 20 feet, which I'm really happy about. But, you know, with the pitch slope, you know, you're better, something's going to be on the side there. It's just going to not be, you know, livable. It's got to be, you know, what's the word? It's got to be equitable for everybody that whether they live in the top of a garage or an ADU or in a normal bedroom. And I think the more clarity that we can give you and staff, it's the better it is so that we, that's why we're doing this again, to make sure that our policy is clear and that people know exactly what they can do. And I don't know how my colleagues feel about that, but that's kind of one of the areas I was looking at that I don't think we, we definitely said this is the way it's going to be. Council member Ready.
Thank you, mayor. And thank you, Congress, council member Aguirre, for your comment. I, I actually would be willing to look at the roof pitch a little bit differently if colleagues, if colleagues would would consider something else. So I appreciate very much staff. And I am so sorry that you have to keep looking at this ADU situation over and over again. You must be really a bit tired of it. And so I appreciate so much the work that you do. And so I do, if I could, just just mention that I feel that you did address the privacy issues. And if I could say that, that homeowners who respect their neighbors also consider their windows and consider their windows and my windows. I'm not in a, I don't have two stories, but bathroom windows are, you know, opaque. And if I were looking into my neighbor's bedrooms or whatever, they would be opaque. You know, people who are thoughtful about each other do that for, you know, just to be good neighbors. And it, and so in my mind, the privacy issues have nothing to do with whether you're an owner or a renter. You just do what's right in order to be a good neighbor for your, in your community. But I don't believe that staff addressed the massing in a way that makes me comfortable. Because the second story really had nothing to do with a garage. It had to do with second story, period. The, we had an example almost a year ago of a garage that was removed and replaced with a larger garage just so that the second story ADU could be built and it could be larger. And the entire two-story project wound up being larger than the original house. So that's the thing I want to avoid is, now, if my colleagues want to negotiate a 600-foot limit above the ground floor, that would be fine. But truly, it has nothing to do with a garage. And it has to do with the massing that is created by that second story. And I, I I lost my, I lost what I was going to say about that. But, but if we can negotiate something about the roof pitch and my colleagues will agree to even a six-foot square foot limit above the ground floor, I would really appreciate it. Oh, just to say that the more expensive these projects are for the person who's building it, the less expensive it's, the less affordable it's going to be for our residents. These large ADUs are not affordable for our residents, for the residents who need them. The ones that are affordable are the single-story ADUs that are being built in people's backyards with the streamlining techniques that we now have in Redwood City. And so those are being built as affordable units for low-income families that need them. And I just want to be really clear about that, that I have never not been an advocate for housing for our families, our low-income families. I'm still an advocate for affordable housing. And these second-story ADUs are not that. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember G.
Thank you, Mayor Howard. Mark, could you take a moment and kind of clarify the privacy regulations for a second here about prohibition against balconies and the exterior stairways and the opaque windows? Does that apply only to adjoining, say, rear yard or side yard? I mean, are they still allowed interior facing to the lot?
Thank you, Councilmember G. Yes, thank you for that clarification. So Apollo briefly mentioned in his portion of the presentation. So this would be exterior facing, so facing the side or rear neighbor's lot. If the proposed balcony or exterior stairwells faced exterior, faced aisle, then if these prohibitions were adopted, that would not be allowed. But if they faced interior, again, you would still be allowed to have a ground floor patio and whatnot. But if they faced interior to the building, then they would not be allowed. And actually, I didn't misspeak there. I think balconies themselves would be prohibited interior, exterior. Stairwells would be prohibited exterior.
Is there a reason why the balconies would be prohibited facing the interior of the lot?
I don't have the history on that, so I will rely on Mr. Rojas if he has additional background.
Just generally, they're a little bit larger. You could stand out in front of them. So there's a lot less distance between the balcony and, say, a property line. But, you know, it's certainly something that can be revisited.
I'm sorry, Mr. Rojas, could you explain that a little bit? Because again, I understand the rear yard and the side yard, but facing the interior of the lot? I'm not, I wasn't tracking what you just said.
Yeah, just being able to walk onto a balcony, your typical balcony can be, you know, a couple of feet deep. Just kind of giving you some extra kind of depth or space in the rear yard.
I think, Councilmember G, if I may, so I I understand where you're going, where that could be a potential privacy concern if it faced the exterior or faced your neighbors on the side or rear. But certainly, if the council felt that if an interior-facing balcony did not have those same privacy concerns, you could modify the recommendation.
No, that exactly is where I'm going, is I understand the side and rear yard facing privacy issues. I was not clear about the interior-facing, you know, opaque windows and the interior-facing prohibition against balconies.
Again, that'd be
No, go ahead, please.
My apologies. The opaque windows or clear-story windows would be the second story, but understood the same potential concerns if they're interior-facing.
I mean, it would be up to the homeowner who created the ADU if they wanted that kind of privacy, interior-facing. I mean, I understand that the side yard and rear yard. Could whoever's controlling the slide go back to the one with the section? With the height on it, please. There we go. You know, I believe this, again, I think this somewhat of an optical illusion. I think that the graphics of the individuals are the same. But the figure on the right is an example, but is not the only example. I think if you were to cut the section the other way, put the figure on the left, it could be one long pitch saying, you know, starting at the low point eight feet and winding up at 20 feet on the right in one long pitch. More of a shed roof rather than a gable like this. Is that correct under the 20-foot height mark in Apollo?
Yeah, that's correct. The existing height requirements is to the top of pitch of the roof.
Correct. And so the graphic representation on the right is just one possible example. It's not the only possible example. One of the reasons why I was interested and I voted to go to the higher limit is I'm not a fan of flat roofs on residential buildings for a couple of reasons. One, it lacks design creativity. At the 16-foot, it would limit you to a flat roof. As well, flat roofs on residential homes or residential units are difficult to maintain and create maintenance issues with debris, drainage and all that fun stuff when the rain doesn't shed and drain properly. So I do think the 20-foot height does give some flexibility to give some pitch to a roof without having a flat roof. I would be more interested in not having a flat roof at 20 and making sure that the extra height, whatever is given, whether it's 20 or more, doesn't result in a larger story height and someone sticks a flat roof at 20 feet or 22 feet or whatever the council decides. I think the extra height that we give should be constrained to design, not to necessarily give interior height. Because if we go, pretend it's 22 feet to 11-foot interior story height and a flat roof would not be consistent with the way I'm thinking about design and privacy to the neighbors. So just some thoughts, Council, for consideration.
Thank you, Councilmember G. Councilmember Espinoza Garnica.
Yeah, I just wanted to speak to some of the comments raised by my, by the other council members, my peers. To say that the ADU stuff is not truly expensive is kind of defeating the purpose of why we're here. Is the fact that we're trying to build as much housing as possible that, with what's available to meet the needs. And there's not a solution to the housing crisis that's a fix-all. Like, I can't give you a solution that's going to solve the housing crisis. Like, nothing, no way we vote about the ADU is going to solve the housing crisis, whether or not we build it at the height limits of 20 feet or not. It's something that we need because there's a crisis. And there are ways, if with the search on the internet, you can look at San Mateo County Housing For All, like Home For All, San Mateo County. They have also ways, examples that we can incentivize folks with loan programs, fee waivers or tax credits to offset the cost of new construction. And I think we can create these incentives in homeowners if there's like a requirement to to rent to lower income, to those that are making below the median income, like truly low income. So I think there are ways that we can be creative about it. We can help fund the ways, we can help fund it. And we can help make it so that those that are building with our tax credit and also rent to truly low-income homeowners. But they are currently predominantly low-income rents, rental, sorry, rental rates. And I think as well, Diana Ready shares a perspective that I, you know, I'm very on the opposite side of where they mentioned that because that the square footage maxing isn't about it being over the garage. It's about the fact that they were against two-stower housing. And I think that's very anti-housing. That's very anti-tenant. We need housing more than ever. And so that's exactly why we shouldn't have restrictions on height. If you don't, like, Diana, you're, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Councilmember Ready, you were speaking of about how it's being a good neighbor. But we have tons of neighbors that have two-story houses that aren't required to have opaque windows. Like, the fact that your window is frosted in the bathroom is because you have the personal choice as a private property owner. And I think it's not being a good owner, also hoarding wealth, which is what single residential zoning is. It is zoning for hoarding land. And there's no restrictions for homeowners to build their balconies because they own their property. So I think property owners should still be able to build ADUs without the same restrictions because, as one of our speakers said, you know, in the comments, Isabella Chu, very well said, it's a double standard. If we're not requiring it of big houses, single houses, single residential homes, why do we require it for ADUs that are still private property and isn't the city's property? Why are we requiring that? The only answer is because we have a double standard for renters and we want to discourage renters. And a lot of the homeowners that are against it are also homeowners that, as I said, are only seeking investment, not the wellness of the community at large. So being housing advocate means you kind of have to do stuff that isn't always going to earn you the highest profit. So we got to move away from speculative commodifying housing. And we can't set a limit on these heights. We can't allow us to be led to think that restricting second-story buildings or ADUs is still being pro-housing. We're in a crisis. That is very anti-housing. And I think, I don't know, dismissive of the urgency that we have that I keep trying to repeat and other council members here keep trying to repeat over and over again. This is what we need. So, thank you.
Mr. Munzer, you have your hand raised.
Thank you, Mayor Howard. Just a few points of clarification. I certainly understand some of the concerns that are being expressed. Just for clarity, you know, not every ADU is rented. Many are occupied by family members or friends or somebody else. So it's just an arrangement made with the homeowner or it's part of their family or whatnot. So I just want to be clear that every ADU is different in terms of its occupancy. We are still waiting for some data from 21 elements, the county housing agency or organization amongst all the jurisdictions in San Mateo County as to the usage of ADUs and also probably as importantly to their rental rates. So we start to get some sort of data as to usage and rentals of ADUs. The other thing, I believe the original objective, I wasn't hearing in this part of 2019, the original objective was that ADUs, since they can be built much closer to side and rear lot lines, typically four feet versus a typical setback for the single-family home, which generally is in the 20-foot range for the rear yard and somewhere in between for the side yard. But that's where those original privacy regulations came into play. I'm not saying that that's how it moves forward. I just want to provide some more input on that.
Thank you. Councilmember G, you have your hand raised. Did you have an additional question to add?
No, my technical error for not lowering my hand. My apologies.
That's okay. Vice Mayor Hale.
Thank you, Mayor. A lot of good feedback from the public and from my colleagues tonight on this issue that has continued from over the years for me because I was in the Planning Commission when we first took this up. So, but it is important to get it right. So I would concur with my colleagues. We want to get it right. And this is just one of many steps. We're working on so many initiatives around ADUs. I don't know if many of the folks know in the audience, but we participated in a pilot program, a one-stop-shop pilot program with the county. We've hosted events with the county where we had 300 people show up because there was so much interest. And I know that our mayor has been working with heart on a set of pre-approved ADU plans that are now getting planning approval. So this is just one of many of the things we're doing to encourage and incentivize ADUs because it is important. I want to pick up where Mr. Munzer left off. So that was my understanding as well around privacy regulations. Is that because there are different setback requirements for homes versus ADUs that that was where some of these privacy ideas were introduced? Is that right? So it's actually not the same. Homes actually have a higher, I don't know the actual technical term, but they would have a higher setback requirement than the ADUs because that was created by a state law mandate. Is that accurate?
Well, hi, Vice Mayor Hale. If I'm understanding you correctly, so are you asking, are the setbacks for single-family homes larger, rear and side, larger than for an ADU?
Just what's the difference, if you could share that with us?
Yeah, so typically, it's 20 feet for a rear yard setback and it's six feet for a side yard setback.
For an ADU or a single-family home?
Single-family home.
Yeah. And for ADUs? Four feet, okay. So that was, that was my understanding as well and why this difference sort of drew interest from the community. It was because, actually, no, a single-family home is required to be further away. So you wouldn't be looking directly into that person's yard. And so that does resonate with me. I do not personally like the idea of making windows opaque. And so maybe that could be an area that we discuss as a council, changing, but keeping the balconies and the stairwell limitation. I have toured, gone on extensive walking tours of all the recently built ADUs from the sidewalk view. And, yeah, I could see some of the concern, these balconies are right up along, or the, not the balconies, the stairwells are right up along the side yard. And there is nothing like that in the single-family context. I've yet to see a single-family home have a walkway like that. So that's how I feel about the privacy regulations. On the massing, I guess one of my questions on that is, we have a limit for the size of ADU in Redwood City, and I want to say it's something like 1,000 square feet.
It's 1,000 square feet. If it's more than one bedroom, it's 800 square feet.
And can the entirety of that ADU be on the second story? Or no?
Yeah, if I may.
Thank you, Mr. Munzer.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Hale. Yeah, the entirety could be hypothetically on the second story.
Okay. Yeah, I guess on this one, I would agree with members of the public and my colleagues who have asked for more flexibility. I, yes, there are some extreme examples, but we've also heard from people in neighborhoods who have three-story garages and they want to put the ADU across the three-story garage. And that, it seems appropriate for that neighborhood. So I think that we should go with the staff recommendation on this. And then I wanted to speak to the height because I was actually the person who spoke in favor of the Belmont ordinance in our last meeting. Um, in our last meeting, and I want to resurrect that as a potential solution to what I'm hearing from my colleagues. Um, if you will recall, the Belmont did actually very much what um Councilmember G is proposing, which is. They set their height limit, so we have now our twenty-foot height limit, but then they gave additional feet solely for design. And if you walk Redwood City, you have homes that are tutors that have this very pronounced peak gable. I don't know what it's called. You know, and then you have Craftsman, you know, and you have Colonial, which are a little bit flatter but sloped. And to me, the 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 ADUs that neighbors in my neighborhood have. Considered the most egregious, if you really look at them, it's not the size, it's often the design. And I think the roof is the most um noticeable design feature on these homes. And so by just cutting it at twenty feet, we're really limiting the ability for that. Um, that ADU to fit in with the neighborhood and the property, and I'm not, I don't think that that. I think if we, if we keep it as is, we will come back a year from now and be responding to um many flat-roofed. ADUs that according to um Councilmember G will also apparently have some water drainage issues, um and that just doesn't sound very good. So I would like to throw that out to my council colleagues for for consideration is. Doing the same thing where we offer an additional, you know, three feet and say it is solely for use on um the roof pitch. So that your roof could match the roof style um of your home. And I think I've answered all of the, I think I've answered all of the other questions, so thank you so much. I I know this has been a really um a long-term issue, but I agree with um Councilwoman Aguirre. It's really important. Um, I think we all know um from our experience, the more specific we can get, the more objective we can get, the easier it is for people to just do the right thing. Which is what I believe what most people want to do is they want to do the right thing. They want to have an easy review process. And this helps um to, this helps residents to get that.
Are there any other council comments at this time?
Okay, uh, well, uh, today I was looking under San Mateo City. San Mateo, City of San Mateo and Redwood City are similar in many aspects. It's it's amazing how many things we do alike. So I was studying uh their ADU and their um addition guidelines. And I came across their recommendations regarding uh design and their guidelines. And I was curious as to how, I didn't catch how current it was, but I thought it was really well done, what I had a chance to read. It was talking about uh allowing people to do additional housing, however, it was important. And they kept emphasizing this, avoid volume close to your property lines, close to your neighbors. Whenever possible, and they kept saying that. It was a constant theme of what they would say, and they kept using the word volume, which to me is like massing. Uh, and I could be wrong, but I, that's what I would assume it means the closest to. And so they were saying, be respectful. You can ju- just re- remember that to avoid the volume and the massing close to property line, close to your neighbors. And they had a lot of suggestions on how to do that. So I, our last meeting. Granted, we didn't have it all together with the information, but what we did agree on, seven-zero, was a twenty-foot height limit. It was a compromise for myself and I think at least one other council member, and I'm sure on the other end, it was a compromise for other council members. But at the end of the day, it was a seven-zero vote, and we all felt comfortable with it because you could do a pitch. You could do a flat if you wanted to, but you could do a comfortable pitch. And as Vice, as, excuse me, Councilmember G said, you could do that shed roof that I have seen on some properties. That kind of complement their own home. So um, I I, I'm still comfortable with twenty foot. I mean, how many emails and hearings have we had where we've had hundreds? Not the eight people who came this evening. I think we've worn the community out on this topic. We would have hundreds and hundreds of emails and lots of meetings on this one topic of how can we make it? A compromise so that we all don't get exactly what we want, but we can live with the results. So I'm a little concerned after the community was thrilled that we came up with a seven-zero vote on a twenty-foot height. That we're now talking about unraveling that. So me, I'm, I'd like to stick to the twenty-foot height. And work with people to show them how they can do an attractive roof and blend with the neighborhood. Um, the privacy regulations, this was discussed ad nauseam at the Planning Commission level. With the community weighing in on this, and I can see we're in certain circumstances when you have a four-foot setback. That's pretty close to your neighbors, and that's why it was discussed limiting the amount of exterior things that we were going to do. Now, the opaque and and the windows, maybe that's something that is looked at. I I, I still am comfortable with the privacy regulations because these were things that were given a great deal of discussion and thought. And voted on, not once, not twice, several times. So again, I'm reluctant to unravel things that I thought that we had agreed upon. Now, the five seventy-six square foot was only put in place because it was at the time we were saying second story was above garage, not, not a home. So it it attempted to uh speak to massing. So I wondered. When we talk to, talk about a home, a single-family home that wants to do an attached ADU, a second story. Is there any example of any city that talks about limiting the massing? Such as the footprint is this many square foot of the bottom floor of a home. And a second story that has an ADU or a junior ADU would be a percentage of that footprint of the bottom floor. Which would, I think, address the massing issue. It would bring it down a bit. It wouldn't be just wall-to-wall and straight up. As some of these are that are being built. So I was wondering if there were any examples of that. I was looking to San Mateo. But I just didn't get deep enough into their document to know if this was being addressed. But it seemed to me like this might be a good compromise. Take a percentage. If we can agree that it's a smaller percentage than the actual footprint of the bottom floor. It makes it less massing and less of of something that's just looking out over someone's property. And becoming a problem for them. I, I'm really trying to find the middle ground here so that we can do more ADUs. Do more junior ADUs and and also keep our neighborhoods from getting upset with everyone and having constant appeals. So, I mean, I'm a big fan of what's hard is doing as well as Home for All because they're encouraging single-story ADUs. So we're making it easier, we're providing plans, and maybe we even offer incentives to make sure that maybe they're affordable. There's something that we could discuss. It's the second story that seems to be the biggest problem. So I um. I I would like to say that for staff, I'm not sure that I can support your recommendation as written. Because there are just too many unanswered questions here. The second-story plate height to eight feet, I get. If you have a twenty-foot height limit, you don't need that story plate height for a uh an attached ADU. But um I would like to see if there was any information regarding a reduced massing on the second story in general. But I, and I'm also, I I think the twenty-foot height limit was a very good compromise we came to. I'd like to see if we can still support that. So I see uh two hands up, uh Councilmember Espinoza Garnica. And then Councilmember Aguirre.
Yeah, I just wanted to clar- clarify on questions. Um, so because in my head, I'm coming to to the ideas of what I'm looking for. And is attachment C ordinance that doesn't apply any massing or privacy regulations also mean that it doesn't apply the twenty-foot height limit?
No, it would apply the twenty-foot height limit, just not these regulations that you're looking at.
Okay, and then G mentioned exterior, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Councilmember G um mentioned exterior. And interior balconies. Can you explain? So I just want to be sure. Interior balconies, are they facing like the backyard? Or are they facing the the street?
Oh, an interior, thank you, Councilmember. Um, the, if, when we reference an interior balcony or an interior stairwell, it means it's interior. To the subject property, so it's interior typically facing the single-family home, right? It's not facing outward, the other side, the exterior side, rear or side of the ADU where it would be. More approximate and closer to the neighbors.
So it doesn't, so, and can you say that again?
Of course. Um, so when we s- reference an interior balcony or interior stairwells. It's interior to the property where the ADU is proposed or constructed. So it's facing in, if you will, in towards the single-family home typically. It depends on how they're laid out.
And to, so if it's exterior, it's facing the road?
Exterior, then it's facing side or rear lot lines out, away from the subject property. To likely neighboring properties. So it would be the um, the outward-facing wall or second story. Outward being directly looking at adjacent neighbors versus interior looking back inward towards the subject property. Can I do better?
Yeah, okay, so the exterior looks at the side and also to the rear end?
The exterior means exterior to the rear lot line and exterior to the side lot line, so facing out.
Facing out, okay. So the exterior one is looking more at the neighbors. Correct, okay, cool. All right, uh, thank you. I'll say something else after, Alicia. Um, thank you.
But I was going to say why, well, okay, Councilmember Aguirre.
Mayor, I I wanted to clarify after your comments. I don't know if the twenty-two foot was proposed. I think we're, we're still at twenty, all of us. Uh, I mean, at least I am. I I haven't heard, the only thing that I brought up was a pitch to look at that, to make that more equitable for that. So I I don't know if anybody else had said twenty-two feet, and you're right, we did work really hard and came to a consensus to get there. So if I'm, if I misunderstood one of my colleagues, that's, that was my clarification, since I made the twenty-foot recommendation at the last meeting as well.
And I believe uh the consensus was twenty and recognizing we can do a pitch with that. And that there were, like us, Councilmember G said, there are several options for the type of roof, but um. So would anyone else like to uh any discussion or a motion?
Mayor Howard?
Yes, Mr. Munzer.
If I may, I apologize. I just want to make sure before we get to the motion, I know the conversation's been about height and and um privacy and massing regulations. But we do need concurrence also on the twenty-foot height or whatever the uh motion is for multifamily properties, which is the first.
Correct, correct. I remember in the report, thank you for reminding me. It's right there, the first bullet point. Thank you very much. But you said it should apply, if it's going to apply for single-family neighborhoods and R2 and so forth. It needs to apply to all multifamilies as well as across the board. So we're talking about keeping things clear and simple, and that was one thing that. I'm glad you reminded me. Thank you.
And and if I may, Mayor, uh, so these uh other privacy regulations, they would also apply to detached multifamily uh ADUs as well.
So whatever we would vote on tonight would apply to both single-family and multifamily.
Presumably, if you, if that motion was made, yes.
Okay, thank you. But you're looking for clarification on that. Thank you very much. I, okay.
Mayor, all of the uh ordinances that are before you um already make those clarifications, so any tinkering that would need to be done. Um, regarding the multifamilies already taken care of in the ordinances for you.
I also wanted to be sure, someone mentioned they did not see the um grandfathering in of the short-term rental units. I believe it is in each one of the, am I correct in each resolution? That it is there, it's in the body of your document, but the, the several units would be grandfathered in to allow for short-term rentals. I think it's January twenty twenty prior to?
There, thank you, Mayor. They are in the ordinance versions, and it would be if they were registered as short-term rentals um prior to January first twenty twenty.
Thank you. Thank you for that clarification. Councilmember Espinoza Garnica.
Well, I was interested in making a motion to see if I could do the whole compromising thing. Um. Um, I think I recall that I was interested at the last ADU meeting on twenty-two feet. Um. But you know, that was me compromising, because ultimately not encouraging second to three-story development is very anti-housing. Um, and not just anti-housing, but very, and it's more anti-tenant. Um, and. I don't believe discouraging second-story development uh for housing or ADU development is going to help our crisis. Or is actually looking at the cap- community's benefit at large. I think it's, it's still looking to benefit just the. The more affluent, those who actually have privilege to own a home. And so I would like to see the interest, I would like to case the interest in adopting an ordinance. That um does not apply any massing or privacy regulations or height limits on ADUs. Um, perhaps, yeah, I'm curious to see what the interest is in that, because I think that's what the council, the public deserves. The tenants more than the homeowners at this point. And um. But also, like, I think if I'm to support any future privacy regulations, it shouldn't be. Including anything other than possibly the exterior balcony. You know, I feel like the limits on privacy are very inequitable. I don't think it's fair. I think if this was a homeowner wanting to improve upon their housing to build a second story, third story. The city council wouldn't be up in arms and nor would half of the residents in those areas, because there's a negative association actually culturally with tenants. Because they think they bring down poverty or they bring in poverty, violence, et cetera. So I'd like to propose the ordinance attachment C with also a recommendation to, or I don't know what it's called. Uh, I'd also like to see um no height limits on ADUs.
So you, you're saying you'd like to make a motion that uh council adopt attachment C?
Yeah.
But in, in addition, not have a height restriction?
Yeah.
Okay, so that motion's been made by Councilmember Espinoza Garnica. I see hands raised, but would someone like to make a second to that motion?
If I may, Mayor?
Yes.
Thank you. If I could just get some clarification from Councilmember Espinoza Garnica regarding the no height limit. Uh, just so that everyone's on the same page. Um, are you, right now, the way that it's being um imposed. It is separate from the normal zoning district heights. And so what is typical is every zoning district has a different height. And you can definitely revert back so that there isn't any special ADU height, and it, it is only subject to whatever the height is. The maximum height is for that zoning district. Is that what you mean to say in your motion?
That there is no limit, if I say there's no, what I mean is that there isn't a limit to the construction, but what you're saying, if I say that, that would be.
So for example, single-family residents, um, and and actually, maybe I could get some help from the planners, um, from Mr. Munzer or Mr. Rojas. But uh, for example, twenty-eight-foot height limits are typical for single-family residential. And so if you're saying, look, I don't agree with any um special height limits for ADUs. They should be subject to all of the other height limits that those zoning districts already have?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
That's exactly it. Thank you very much. Twenty-eight, you see, that's even, that's like, if you, I feel like my argument for the council is that you don't have a problem with your neighbors. my argument for the council is that you don't have a problem with your neighbors getting a nice old house. You really shouldn't have a problem with your tenants getting a nice old little place for themselves with a balcony. I mean, other than that, it's probably a classist argument, and that's that's why I'm making this motion.
I can confirm it is 28 feet.
Thank you.
And other districts would have different heights, um, because we are talking about different districts. That was just one example. So you are your motion is to revert to the zoning district maximum height and none of the massing or privacy regulations.
Yes, yes. Um, yes, thank you so much for clarifying that for me as well, Veronica, or attorney.
Okay, now I'd like to just be sure I I do this correctly, so I'm going to ask our city attorney. Uh, can I take raise hands at this point, or do we ask for a second?
You have a motion on the table, so you can ask for a second to see if there's any motion to be discussing amongst your council.
And then I can have discussion. Okay, thank you. So I'd like to ask if anyone wants to make a second to that motion? I do not see, Vice Mayor Hale, I see your hand raised. Is is that to make a second or to discuss?
I've had it raised for a while.
I know. Okay, okay. Then the motion at this time, there is no second for the motion? So that the motion would die for a second. Councilman, excuse me, Vice Mayor Hale, you have your hand raised. I'm sorry, go ahead.
Thank you. Okay, well, I um I would also like to find a compromise here. I think that we are hearing some different things. First of all, I compromised last week on the 20 feet, and and we agreed to that. And what I'm suggesting with um the Belmont-style proposal is not adding additional feet, and it's very much like what um Councilmember G was saying, not to say you can have additional feet. It's literally about the design. And if we could go back to that um that sketch slide, you know, I don't, I don't see how um you take such a minimal number of feet, you know, two, three feet, and create um a slope that would match what a lot of the homes here have. So for the homes that don't need it, it's irrelevant. But for the homes that do have a significant peak, it allows us to keep it with the um the style and the design, and I think it's aesthetically just so much more pleasing than to say oh, you you're gonna have to go with something more modern, which is generally what the flat roofs are, than something that's in the period of your home, and the the biggest way to tell that is with the slope. So I I personally think if we were to stay with 20, we will have just as many emails uh and calls of people in neighborhoods saying, how come you're allowing all these modern-style uh ADUs in this, you know, neighborhood that has this more traditional housing? So I think that it is um a design mistake and one that would be um would be noticeable, would make them stand out more than blending in. So I I would like to see that. I don't, I don't know, I threw out 23 feet because it's what Belmont did. Um, I could just as easily say 22 feet. I don't know what um what would be helpful for uh for my colleagues to get there, but I would like to see that compromise. I see Councilwoman Ready, uh, raise your hand, so perhaps she has a thought to further the discussion.
Councilmember Ready?
I do indeed. So I appreciate this conversation. Um, so I I would support maintaining the 20, 20 feet in terms of the the living space and um and with the understanding that there would be that a peaked roof might be required in order to match the map of the 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 main house. I would be willing to go there. And but but as I said before, I would like to have considered a 600-foot um second-story, if it's the, if it's a second-story that is within that four feet of a neighbor. Because when when we remodel our homes and put a second story on it, it's not four feet away from the the from the um the fence line. And so um there was one of the, one of the ADUs, you could actually touch the roof of the it's right there, it's it's just really close, and and so I want to respect that, and everyone is our resident, right? We need to listen to all of our residents, and um and so if we're able to make compromises and um and create a situation where um it's it's kind of a do no harm situation is where I am. I'd like to, I'd like to do something where we're not hurting people.
Well, I was going to ask Mr. Munzer or Mr. Rojas if we kept the 20-foot but allowed a variance, I think that's what you call it, a variance to happen for someone who can clearly demonstrate that there's a roof style to their home and they'd like to match it. I don't know if that would make things more difficult, but I wouldn't think so if someone clearly has a a steep peak and uh and and the 20-foot can't allow them to to really complement their own home. A variance could be looked at, I would think, to do that. I I'd be reluctant to pick a a number out of a hat, because I don't think that's getting us to what we want, which is allowing people to design a roof that is complementary to their own home. I I'm guessing that's really where we're trying to find that compromise is. You want style, and this this could allow that to happen.
Mayor, if I may, can I respond to that?
Sure.
Yeah, I I I actually, like, what I'm trying to avoid is, we've had this long history of appeals based on not having that clarity, and I think the way it was written right now, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Munzer, if somebody wanted to add that to match, it would have to go to planning staff or to, who who would have that authority presently?
Have to go to, I'm sorry, have to go what?
To planning manager? I I thought that was part of it, the way it was written.
Yeah, if I may, uh, Mr. Munzer. So the 2019 ordinance, it it had a kind of a 20-foot to the plate height or ceiling height of the of the structure, and then allowing additional uh roof height to the to the zoning administrator. So, you know, just looking at the the plans, seeing what the roof slope is for the main home, and determining whether that was compatible uh with the ADU. Uh, and I could speak as well to uh Mayor Howard's point about, you know, not wanting to pick just a a random number. I could probably provide a more additional background on a kind of roof slope. So, you know, looking at uh your typical 20-foot wide span, we studied that because, you know, 20 garages tend to be uh around 20 feet wide. For like a four and 12 pitch roof, that's a very standard, typical roof slope, you need around uh three and a third feet. And for something five and 12, you need a little bit around four feet. So uh, you know, previously in other recommendations, we've uh recommended allowing three or four additional feet for that roof slope. And we've shown different diagrams kind of demonstrating that. So perhaps a an area that could be explored would be allowing three or four feet uh for additional roof slope.
That's really helpful, having a specific, I'm sorry, Mayor, you were gonna say.
Well, I was going to say, from what? What's your baseline?
Uh, just the uh degree that needs to be built out from a for a 20-foot wide garage. So for a 20-foot wide structure, if you want to have a four and 12 roof, you need the the roof, the rise and run of the roof would eventually come out to three feet uh tall. So that pitch would add an additional three feet to the structure on top of the 20-foot ceiling height, if it was 20 feet wide.
Well, I didn't think that the ceiling height was 20 feet. And I thought it was eight feet, and there was an additional footage. So I, now, now I'm lost.
I'm sorry, the the total ceiling height of the structure, so the structure was two stories tall, you know, adding in the the eight-foot ground floor, eight-foot second floor, and all the other things involved with that.
Okay, so so you're suggesting that in order to do a peak roof, you may need to do an initial, initial additional, excuse me, three to four feet. Okay.
That's correct, Mayor.
And that just depends on what the style is. So it could be less or it could be more, like a Tudor could be more, because it goes so peaked, or?
I want to stress, I'm sorry, Vice Mayor, I want to stress typical, you know, there are, the people will have exceptions for us. And and we understand that, but Apollo's point, typically, for roof pitch, roof slope, you're talking three to four feet.
So I do like, so I like the mayor's suggestion. I I don't know if there is a way to state this into an ordinance where it's we could either state the three to four feet or pick one of those additional as to meet the pitch, or we could state um that it's I guess we would want to be more exacting, right? So I guess if we know that it's three to four feet, probably going with that makes more sense than um just saying uh whatever is needed to match the roof. So I think I would, I I I personally more comfortable with being more specific so that we don't get ourselves and our staff into, you know, and our planning commission into having a lot of, a lot of appeals. So I would I would say that, on on the point around the massing, I guess what I'm struggling with is if it's about the distance from the, from the side yard, um the massing, I don't, I don't understand how that matters, because you're just still seeing the wall, and so that's mostly impacted by the setback amount. And um, so that that's one that to me feels like it's less relevant than, you know, in a situation where someone would desire that amount of space up on on top of their garage. Um, and then there's the fact that it's also capped at 1,000 square feet. So if they're doing something on the bottom, which presumably something has to be on the bottom, a stairwell, an entryway so that you can get up into the second story, you're already cutting away at that square footage. So I I'm less concerned with it, um, willing to hear. And and I think a couple of council members have pointed at this notion of the interior facing anything. And I feel like I agree with them that we should be allowing interior-facing balconies or windows, because they're just facing the house. So I don't, I guess I don't see how that would be so disruptive. Leave it there for more comment from the colleagues, my colleague.
Councilmember Ready, you have your hand raised?
No, I'll remove it. I I still want to um have um colleagues consider the 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 size of the second story.
Okay, uh, Councilmember Espinoza Garnica.
Hi, so I would like, well, uh, thank you to Councilmember Hale. I think I would, I would compromise with that if there is like a privacy issue. So I'm glad there's some agreement there. I wanted to raise another motion, and I was curious if we could try, because my first ADU request, the last meeting, was 22 feet. So I'm interested in seeing who would be interested in voting for a motion that would have 22 feet height limit for detached ADUs. And no massing restriction and no privacy regulations aside from prohibiting exterior balconies. I think the argument that was raised after I spoke um by by um Ready, or not the argument, but the concerns I hear from Ready, and also I hear from Howard, Mayor Howard, um, and Councilmember Ready, is that they're not in favor of second-story development. And I think the words re, uh, Councilmember Ready used was, they don't want to hurt anybody. There is actual harm being done by not housing people versus being disgruntled as a homeowner because a building next to your house got taller. When we're compromising, trying to think of ways to further look at how we can make housing and homeownership more exclusive and not allow more renters to be in these residential areas, that is actual harm you're doing to underserved community members. And I don't think we're taking into regard how real that is versus how people are dissatisfied with aesthetics. Oh, but my ordinance, also my motion, is that I'd like to also, you know, put in what uh Vice Mayor Hale said with the aesthetic part, like, I hope that, you know, I don't want no, anyone to live in anything that looks ugly or is inhumane to actually inhabit. So like, the the frosted panels seems claustrophobic. Not having balconies on a second-floor story also seems like claustrophobic, because we don't have much public space or like a communal area for most of our housing development. So those are my interests. I urge Councilmember Ready and the mayor to con, and the mayor um to consider how you're actually hurting people when you vote no against 22 feet or 25 feet or 28 feet. More than you're hurting homeowners, because homeowners always have the luxury of having property. And the reason that their property gets to stay wealthy is because that residential area doesn't sell to low-income people or black and brown people. Like, literally, the cost will go up if a black or brown family moves up or like goes down in that area because a black or brown family goes up. So there's no real way of saving the homeowners while also looking out for uh, you know, underserved renters, because ultimately, the price is being driven by the fact that it's whiter and richer, and that's the thing we have to be fighting against. We need to make it more inclusive, all incomes, all races, all backgrounds. So you're actually hurting people, Mayor and Councilmember Diana Ready, when you're anti-ADUs being second-story and not for creating as much housing as possible. And I'm compromising here with 22 feet, with the additional four feet for aesthetics, and the only limitations we have for privacy is that we prohibit exterior, which is, I think, just to correct me, is the one that faces neighbors, um, exterior balconies. Because anything else is is not helpful, does not center tenants who are the most at risk. We cannot treat everyone as equals. There is an equity issue. So if you really don't want to hurt anyone, build more housing. More housing that's affordable. Thank you.
So I want to clarify, you're making a motion, and I want to be sure that we have it. You're saying that you would support 22 feet with an additional four feet for design peak and no massing or privacy regulations except outside, except outside?
Exterior balconies. It seems that seems, those, that seems to be
Okay.
Exterior balconies seem to be facing um neighbors, so.
Okay. So that that's a motion. Is that clear for everyone? Okay, is there a second for that motion? Seeing none. Would anyone like to, Vice Mayor Hale?
Okay, let me give this a shot, and I appreciate um Councilwoman Espinoza Garnica making uh making the two first motions. These are tricky ones to make with this many line items. So here's what I heard in terms of a compromise. 20-foot with the, I don't recall if it was three or four feet. Maybe somebody nod if I say four.
I like four feet.
Okay.
How about three?
Well, let me get through the whole thing. So 20 feet, four feet to accommodate, because it was Mr. Rojas did say three and a third feet minimum for some of the slopes to four feet. Then um the the privacy regulations would prohibit the balcony facing the rear yard or the side yard, but allowing it if it was facing out or facing in, so facing the interior and um limiting the exterior stairways and um windows. I I mean, again, I I personally feel okay with the with the windows, because it's not that. But if somebody wants to make an amendment, that's fine. And then um on the massing regulations, I heard a compromise number of 600 square feet from Councilmember Ready, and I don't know if that's shared more broadly, but that would be the motion. I'm waiting for the city attorney to raise her hand now and ask questions about it.
I'm happy to help um with that motion, if you would like, Vice Mayor Hale.
Thank you, and I believe I had a second there too, just to make sure.
I heard a second, and so what I'm gonna ask is for both the moving party and the second to confirm. And so what I'm going to ask is for both the moving party and the second to confirm.
Did someone make a second? I didn't see a hand.
It was councilwoman ready, council member ready.
Oh, council member ready, you're making a second?
And I second with, with the clarification that it's up to four feet if needed for the roof pitch.
Correct. And not, and that's not additional height. That's just for the root, correct?
Exactly.
So with that change in language, I do want to caution you in, and we want to make sure that we are completely objective in our standards. And I think, you know, when you're talking about, all of these are up twos. The maximum height is 20 feet, but it's up to 20 feet. So what about language? Let's just stick to that one for a second there. Maximum height is 20 feet when such unit has a flat roof or 24 feet when such unit has a pitched roof. And then in parentheses, with the additional four feet solely devoted to the roof pitch.
I can live with that. That sounds good.
It's objective, completely objective. But making sure that those additional four feet are only to provide for roof pitch. They are not adding any additional height.
Yes, that's, that's correct, up to four feet.
Well, I have a question then because I, I don't want to encourage flat roofs. And I'd like to ask if council member G would address this. If this were to pass, I'm hearing it echo, I'm sorry. If in fact, we went to 20 feet with four feet allowed for a pitched roof, aren't we actually encouraging more flat roofs? I'd like to ask council member G because he has a lot of experience in this area.
Thank you, Mayor Howard. I, I share your concerns. I would go the other way. I would say a maximum of 18 feet with a flat roof and up to, I believe it was 24 feet with a pitched roof to allow a design that is more compatible with the home to discourage, you know, and that's why I went down on that 18 feet to avoid the, a flat roof. I do not think a 20 foot building height with a flat roof is an attractive design in the neighborhood.
So you're, you're saying that might be best to consider 18 with four feet, yeah, and four feet if there's a pitch required.
And up to 24, and a maximum of 24 feet with a pitched roof.
Well, 22 feet if it's 18.
Or whatever people are talking about. Yeah. My 18 was to discourage a flat roof.
But was the, through the mayor, would the 20 foot in that scenario still apply to the pitch? So you'd still have 20 feet for the two-story ADU? And then you'd have the additional feet for the pitch? Is that correct?
I think you could go 18 and 22. I, I think the, the challenge, and I think Vice Mayor, you said it early in your comments, was the flat roofs. And so by going 18 feet with a flat roof and 22 with a pitched roof, and I'll have to turn to our city attorney with that and our staff, would that provide sufficient clarity and incentive to avoid flat roofs?
Well, if I may, council member G, if you, if the ordinance regulated a two-story or an ADU for a flat roof at 18 feet, you could still, it could still be built, that, that would still provide for livable second floor space based on the designs that we.
Correct.
So it wouldn't, it would still allow, yes. Would it discourage it because it's shorter? Probably, but it would, it would still be, you could still do it with a flat.
Heading to council member G's, oh, I'm sorry. I actually think, council member G, you have a good question. I'm curious if either Mr. Rojas or Mr. Resia, our senior assistant city attorney who's on the line, if, if they know if the ADU law allows us to require that the ADU match the roof pitch of the home. And then maybe we can start there and then go with the, with the height ranges as you're talking about, council member G. Now, I do want to mention, we do have a motion in the making by council member, Vice Mayor Hale and council member Ready. But I'm wondering if that's where you were going, council member G.
In general, yes, conceptually, yes. So if you can, if you and the legal team can provide a foundation for my thought, that'd be great.
Yes, if I may, good evening, Mayor Howard, council members. So the state ADU law does not require that ADU, the roof pitch of the ADU, you know, matched the roof pitch of the main home. It just, just doesn't address that issue. What it addresses more broadly is a concept such as that the ADU consideration, you know, has to be ministerial in nature. It cannot be discretionary and it provides for such things as streamlined ADUs being only subject to a building permit, you know, as has been discussed at prior council meetings. But the state ADU, ADU law does not specifically address roof pitch.
And so would the city be compliant with the ADU law if it required that the ADU match the pitch to the extent possible of the home?
Yes, no, I think it would because by saying if it's, if it matches the roof pitch of the main home, you know, that's something that's measurable. I think it's, it's objective. You can just examine the roof pitch of the main home. And then it would not, you know, involve, you know, discretion on the part of city staff. But it looks like Mr. Rojas has his hand raised amongst many other folks. So we'll turn it back over to Mayor Howard.
Okay, Mr. Rojas, did you want to add to that?
Yeah, I would say Mr. Resia is completely correct. It is objective. However, you know, homes, they're very eclectic, there's a lot of variety. Sometimes it's not a singular roof pitch on a home. Sometime you have multiple roof pitches. And so trying to, try to figure that out amongst staff or even the public coming in, I think would be difficult to implement. I think some of the background, going back to 2019, the reason why we in 2020 want to select an objective standard is because, as Mr. Resia said, these are ministerial permits, so there can't be any discretionary review. There have to be objective standards. So as it was worded in 2019, you can have the 20 foot ceiling height, but with ZA discretion, you can allow the certain roof pitch. Here, you don't have that same luxury where, where we have discretion. You need to establish a, a set number. And you could definitely do that with kind of complex calculations for roof heights and roof slopes. But in the interest of simplifying it for the public, you know, having an objective number, I think would be a lot easier for people to absorb.
Mayor, if I may?
Yes, Vice Mayor Hale?
I've gotten a lot of input. So what I would, what I would say for this motion then, I think it's about providing an incentive to match it, but not specifying it has to match it. And that way, we don't get ourselves into the finger pointing of which gable were you trying to match? I could see that was a really good call out, Mr. Rojas, about why that would be confusing. But it would create an incentive to move away from the, the flat roof and just the height of the flat roof. So what I would, what I would say from that feedback that I would be willing to integrate into the motion is this idea that for a flat roof, we'd go down from the 20 to the 18. But then for the pitched roof, we would still maintain the 20 foot height and then go up to three feet to accommodate the additional slope for the pitch.
Okay, so that's changed then, all right.
Before it was, everything would be at 20 and then we would go up. And so what I changed was integrating in the 18 with the flat roof from council member G.
But I, I thought what council member G said was from the 18, additional four feet to adapt for a pitch, which would bring it to 22 feet, which seemed very clear to me.
I would want to hear from my colleagues on that. For example, councilwoman Aguirre had made a comment about not wanting it to feel so tight. So I'm not sure if there's broader interest in that. Would love to hear more feedback on that.
I guess I need to ask, I need to ask the second of the motion, how she feels about your motion, I guess, before we get into discussion. So you're, you're changing the motion and council member Ready?
No, I'm happy listening to the discussion as well. And I, and I want to come up with a, a compromise that everyone can live with. So I'm happy to hear the, the discussion. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Council member Aguirre, you have your?
Yes, thank you. I understand the explanation that council member G gave us and I appreciate his expertise and background. But I, to me, it's limiting again and it's bringing it down to something that we have already agreed on, which is a 20 foot. And I agree with Apollo, if you, if you walk around the different slopes of homes, some are flat, some are different pitches. And I, I don't want to create an ordinance that is limiting. And I don't know, could you show us the picture again with, you know, that, that was a couple of slides back? And if we went and, so if we look at that and we went to 18 feet, that visual shows us what we would do. So it would limit down to a person. Again, it's almost, it's the same limit that we had when we decided to move the slope up. Now we're bringing it down and so it's going to be the same issue. If you look at 18 feet, it's going to be exactly at the same line, even if it's a flat roof. And that's going to be the issue of the crampedness and, you know, down to the, why I even brought up the idea of the slope roof height limit. So that's just my thinking on it.
I'm sorry, we're having a little technical difficulty here. Council member Espinoza Garnica.
Hi, yeah. Um, is it okay if I comment on that too? Because my original, my hand raised was because I had like a point of information about amendments and what, when they follow. So say if I didn't agree completely with what was being motioned, does the vote happen and then an amendment can follow? Or can it be brought up in discussion when the motion's made?
Well, we can make a discussion now. There's a motion and a second. You can have discussion. But if nothing changes from the motion and the second or, then we would vote on that. And then if that does not pass, then we could do something else. So you can bring up, yeah, if you want a point of clarification or if you wanted to ask additional question.
Okay, thank you. I do have a following then comment because that was my concern. I appreciate Vice Mayor Hale's ways of looking at it to, to meet these compromises. But I have to agree on the limiting, going back to 18 feet is, is is more, isn't really going to help further. I think 20 was, 20 feet was the harder compromise to make. I think I really need, like, I would really hope that council member Ready and Mayor Howard and even council member G, I feel like I haven't heard from council member G speak on, on it so much. But, you know, on how they'd feel if they'd be in support. I basically like, I would like to keep, keep it at 20 feet as possible. I do like the idea of creating the aesthetic height. And so I hope that we can keep aesthetic a principle with 20 feet. You know, I'm very reluctant about the, the 600 square foot. To me, it just, it just doesn't seem like it's, it just seems trivial. And at the end of the day, I, I think I've made it my point clear and I don't think I have to exhaust it if people don't feel the same way. But I think we really need those who haven't spoken about it perhaps to, to really think about tenants and what the community needs at large and not just what private property owners. Because ultimately, I don't think it's going to help or it's going to lead us anywhere that's drastically different than what it is. Because what, where I'm coming from, it seems like homeowners may have some difficulty adjusting. But it's not a drastic change and it's not actually harming folks as some members may feel is happening to them.
Okay, would anyone else like to comment to this? I see no hands raised. So I guess I will ask council member, excuse me, Vice Mayor Hale. I see a hand raised there and it's not showing over here, but I'm looking at you and I'm thinking that you must be wanting to speak, so go ahead.
That's fine, thank you. So all really helpful points. What I'm, and for councilwoman Espinoza Garnica, I hear your disappointment. And what I'm attempting to do is get us to a place of a compromise and, and moving forward. And that means that sort of all of us are, are losing out on something. You know, I agree with you on the, on the massing, but I'm willing to give on that. I'm also hearing from councilwoman Aguirre and from you on let's not move the 20 feet and let's make the pitching possible so that we can, hopefully people will want to, to do something that looks, that looks good and at least we're making that possible more than if they want to. It's simply making it possible. So that's where, that's where I'm going with this motion. So hearing all that feedback, yes, Mr. Muntz?
I'm sorry, I know you're on a roll, my apologies. I just wanted to get us back. I know this slide is very popular, but if we could just get back to the, I think that will help.
That would help, thank you, thank you. And when we're in the motion making. So I would, so I, having heard all the feedback and the input, that was really helpful. I would go back to sticking with the 20 feet that we had already agreed to, adding the additional feet for, for any sort of pitching of the roof. And then the same privacy regulations that I had articulated earlier. I had suggested keeping the windows. I didn't hear anyone speaking to that. So I don't know if anyone wants to amend that. But I'm seeing councilwoman Espinoza, let me just finish and then you can.
Absolutely, no worries.
Okay, great. And then also, you know, I would prefer to not have the regulations. But again, in the interest of moving us forward, it's almost 10 o'clock. We have another substantial item on the agenda that I know a lot of folks are here for and I want to make sure we can get to that as well, because I'm sure all of you do. So the 600 feet for the above the ground floor, so for the second story. So that would be the motion. And now we're there, the comment from?
Vice Mayor.
Ramirez, and yes, I'm so sorry to, Mr. Ramirez, you, you told me the correct way to say it and now I'm sure I didn't say it the way you desired, so please.
Thank you, sorry. Um, I just want to make sure because I think I'm actually getting a little bit lost and I'm sorry about that. And I'd like to just parrot your motion. In, I believe what you're trying to do is do a first reading of this new ordinance. I think you are interested in alternative one, which is attachment B, which still has the square foot limitation. So I believe, you know, if I would, your motion is to introduce alternative one ordinance with the following revisions. One, the maximum height is 20 feet when such unit has a flat roof or 24 feet when such unit has a pitched roof.
But only the four feet are used for the pitch?
With up to, yes, with, with the four feet solely devoted to the roof pitch. In addition, balconies and second story decks shall be located interior to the site and not facing the immediately adjacent side or rear yards. Open stairways shall be located interior to the site and not facing immediately adjacent side or rear yards. You're removing second story plate height limitations. And for windows, I believe you're keeping those in. I recommend a clarification to say that second story windows facing immediately adjacent to side and rear neighbors shall be made opaque and clara story. Does that capture your motion or did I get something wrong?
I believe that does.
So the only thing removed then is, is the second story plate height limitation?
Actually, the, you mentioned 600 square foot massing.
That's what Councilwoman Ready had suggested, so we had amended that to 600 square feet.
So subsection one no longer reads 576, but 600 square feet of the accessory dwelling unit shall be constructed above the ground floor.
Correct. And then for windows, I was suggesting keeping, allowing windows. I, I don't know if you, what you'd said for that.
Allowing windows, so you mean not making windows opaque?
That's what I had suggested, yes.
I'm sorry, okay, let's start again.
Yes, because I hadn't heard any comment on that, so I'm keeping it back.
Okay, thank you.
But removing the balconies and the stairwells, yes.
So you are proposing introducing an ordinance, starting with, I, I think you should start with alternative one. So introducing an ordinance that includes all of the provisions in alternative one or exhibit B, except to revise sections, the sections regarding height to read maximum height is 20 feet when such unit has a flat roof, 24 feet when such unit has a pitched roof with up to the additional four feet solely devoted to the roof pitch. No more than 600 square feet of the ADU shall be constructed above the ground floor. Balconies and second story decks and open stairways, I'm going to shortcut this, shall be located interior to the site and not facing the immediately adjacent side or rear yards. And no other limitations, so no limitation to second story plate height, no limitation to windows in any, in any event. Okay, I think that motion is clear. And Council, and Councilmember Ready seconds that motion?
I didn't, I didn't hear the 600 square foot massing again. I'm sorry, did I miss that?
I, I thought it was in there.
Was it in there? Okay, I'm sorry then, yeah, I'm trying to write too many things down here. Okay, the only thing I would say is that the, the windows, there was a great deal of discussion with the, the planning commission on that. And it was recommended that windows have some kind of covering or be smaller, just so that if they are in fact overlooking someone's backyard. And so I, I just, I, I'm, again, I'm, I'm trying not to unravel everything that the planning commission did. They were, they took a lot of heat and they listened to a lot of comments.
Could we also keep the, the inward facing windows to be clear then and just have a similar?
Well, that makes sense to me, yeah, that makes sense.
Absolutely.
So it's just standing balconies, yeah, okay. But then the first floor can have all the windows.
So then a friendly amendment that would include that second story windows facing immediately adjacent to side and rear neighbors shall be made opaque and clara story. And I'm sorry if I have been saying that wrong.
Is that correct, Mayor? Is that what you were expressing?
Yes, thank you. I appreciate the clarification. And, and it's clear then that the 20-foot, I mean, someone can do a flat roof, but we don't want to encourage it. I mean, I'm hoping people won't decide that they're going to do that. We're just allowing if someone has a pitch that needs addressing, they can go up to 24. But I, I don't want to encourage somebody to do a flat roof if we don't have to.
Ms. Ramirez, are you still, did you still, or?
I'm trying to address Councilmember G's point that we're not trying to encourage people to do flat roofs.
I agree. And I, Ms. Ramirez still has her hand raised, and I don't know if that's a leftover, if she still had more feedback from me on the motion. Or Ms. Diaz's?
Sorry, that was leftover.
Okay.
Thank you. I just wanted to be confirmed that the motion was seconded or that the, the power seconded or agreed to that. And I'm seeing Councilmember Ready nodding her head, so.
Yes, it is. And, and the windows listed in that ordinance, the recommended ordinance, did very clearly say immediately adjacent side and rear neighbors shall be made opaque. So inward, that was already accommodating your, your point, so.
That's great. Okay, so we have a motion and a second.
Yay.
Okay.
Okay, then I guess if there's no further discussion, let's have a roll call and.
We'll start with Councilmember Espinoza Garnica.
Yes.
Councilmember G.
Yes.
Councilmember Ready.
Yes.
Councilmember Aguirre.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hale.
Yes.
And Mayor Howard.
Yes.
The motion passes with six votes. Councilmember Smith is absent this evening.
Okay, thank you very much, Ms. Aguilar, and thank you to staff. And thank you so much for the robust discussion from council. I, I really appreciate that we were able to listen to everyone's point of view. But I'm, I'm really pleased we were able to come up with a compromise. So thank you all very much for that effort. And now we're going to move on to an equally important item here. We're going to be discussing hazard pay, which is item 8A. And here we are. Our economic development manager, Simon Young, will give a presentation. Mr. Wong?
Yes, good evening, Mayor, members of city.
Hi, you're stuck with us, thank you.
Yes, I did. Thank you for, so much for having me. My name is Simon Wong, City's Economic Development Manager. And the item before you tonight is an urgency ordinance and a regular ordinance that requires hazard pay for large grocery and drugstore workers. Before we begin, I would like to give special thanks to our city attorney's office and Equity Inclusion Officer for their hard work and collaboration, given the quick turnaround time needed to bring this item before city council. Next slide. So our agenda tonight includes a few questions to ask of council, some background information, analysis and key provisions, comparing our proposed ordinance with other San Mateo County cities, an overview of community engagement efforts, communication and a staff recommendation. We have a few questions for council to think about as we go through this presentation. Should the city require grocery employers with more than 750 employees pay hazard pay? Should this pay be limited to $5 per hour with credit for any current hazard pay? Should this pay expire July 11th? Should this pay begin immediately if we adopt the urgency ordinance or begin May 26th if we adopt just a regular ordinance? And should the city adopt both an urgency ordinance and a regular ordinance? So hazard pay was first discussed at the March 8th, 2021 city council meeting, where staff was directed to develop a hazard pay ordinance for employees of large grocery store and drugstores. We were directed to draft both an urgency and regular ordinance based on analysis of similar cities in San Mateo County who have recently passed hazard pay ordinances. Those cities include Daly City, Millbury, San Mateo and South San Francisco, as seen in attachment C in the staff report. But we will also revisit this comparison in a few more slides. The city council also directed staff to seek input from employers and the community, and several council members offered to help with outreach. The basis for this ordinance is that grocery store workers and drugstore workers are essential workers and have continued to report to work and serve the communities despite the ongoing hazards of COVID-19, helping to ensure the Redwood City community has had access to the food they need during this pandemic. Many of these grocery store workers, on top of being regularly exposed to the novel coronavirus, face high turnover since their role as an essential worker has meant longer hours. And they now have added responsibilities of disinfecting stores, enforcing social distancing and monitoring mask wearing amongst their customers. In a study published by the Occupational Environmental Medicine Journal and included as attachment F to the staff report, there was a significantly higher percentage of grocery store workers who tested positive for COVID-19 as opposed to the general population. According to the Brickings report, some of the largest grocery stores have made record profits during the pandemic. At a time when the frontline workers have risked their own health to serve their community, additional pay could support the city council's goal of equity. Next slide. The ordinances before you tonight propose a hazard pay amount of $5 per hour and covered employers include large grocery stores and drugstores that employ 750 or more employees nationwide. Within Redwood City, these stores may include Costco, CVS, grocery outlet Lucky's, Nob Hill, Rite Aid, Safeway, Smart and Final, Target and Whole Foods. Covered employees include individuals who work in a grocery store or drugstore on either a full-time or a part-time basis and whose work exposes them to contact with store patrons. The urgency ordinance has been drafted to take effect immediately if adopted and will expire on July 11th, 2021. A regular ordinance, if introduced at tonight's meeting and then adopted at the April 26th council meeting, will take effect 30 days later on May 26th, 2021 and will also expire on July 11th, 2021. In short, the urgency ordinance, if adopted, will take effect 45 days ahead of the regular ordinance. In the event any, of any legal challenge, adoption of both a draft and a regular ordinance helps limit the city's exposure on the urgency action itself. So it is good practice to adopt the same ordinance using the traditional two readings and 30-day waiting period as a backup. The ordinance also allows for large grocery stores and drugstores to apply any credit for hazard pay that has been employer initiated, which can count towards a $5 per hour hazard pay requirement. For example, an employer that offered $2 per hour in hazard pay owes an additional $3 per hour instead. The March 8th referral suggested consideration of requiring leave time for employees to be vaccinated. Since then, a new state law, SB 95, has come into effect. It requires employers with more than 25 employees to provide broader supplemental sick leave of up to 80 hours related to COVID-19, including time off for vaccinations. As a result, the proposed ordinance does not include additional leave provisions. Staff would also like to note that there have been a number of legal challenges by the grocery store industry, and they have argued that these ordinances violate the equal protection clause by singling out grocery, grocery stores and that they interfere with labor relations and collective bargaining between grocery stores and unions who represent employees, which are preempted by the National Labor Relations Act. As was mentioned previously, we compared a number of key provisions of hazard pay ordinances from other San Mateo County cities, Daly City, Millbury, San Mateo and South San Francisco. In terms of number of employees by grocery stores nationwide, it's about split between 500 or 750 employees. And half of the cities do not have a square footage requirement. Most do not provide retroactive pay, and the ordinances last between 90 to 120 days, with Redwood City lasting about 90 days. In addition to these four cities, the cities of Belma and San Carlos and the county of San Mateo have considered but have not yet adopted a hazard pay ordinance. Even with the shortened timeframe, the city was still able to collect community feedback through a survey, which was conducted over a two-week period from March 23rd to April 6th. Of the 324 responses received, 67% indicated support for hazard pay and 33% did not. Some key comments from those who were for and against hazard pay indicated that a hazard pay ordinance would have been more appropriate early in August, early in 2021, 2020, excuse me, and that not just grocery store and drugstore workers merit hazard pay. We also heard a few misconceptions regarding hazard pay that we would like to clarify. The city is not expending funds to cover the increase in hazard pay. The hazard pay amount is not $5 on top of previous hazard pay amounts provided on a voluntary basis, so a credit is included. And not all grocery and drugstore workers are represented by unions who negotiate salaries on their behalf. City council and staff are also able to do individual outreach to many of our grocery and drugstores, with most store managers eliciting a positive response to a hazard pay ordinance. Some stores have provided one-time bonuses and or hazard pay early on in the pandemic on a temporary basis. A smaller number of stores indicated that a $5 per hour increase would be significant and could jeopardize the store's ability to remain open. There's also worth noting that some of our smaller grocery stores, who would not be subject to the proposed hazard pay ordinance, have voluntarily provided bonuses and or hazard pay to their employees during the pandemic. We also received a number of email comments from the public, which are included as attachment G in the staff report, and were mostly in support of hazard pay. If adopted, we will provide an overview of the hazard pay ordinance and its key provisions on the website for employers, employees and any other interested parties to review. We also follow up with all potentially impacted businesses and communicate the requirements of the hazard pay ordinance and provide the information as a hard copy through direct mailers. So again, we would like council to consider the following questions. Should the city require grocery employers with more than 700 employees pay hazard pay? Should this pay be limited to $5 per hour with credit for any current hazard pay? Should this pay expire July 11th? Should this pay begin immediately if an urgency ordinance is adopted or begin May 26th if a regular ordinance is adopted? Should the city adopt both an urgency ordinance and a regular ordinance? At this point, staff recommends council adopt an urgency ordinance to require large grocery stores and large drugstores to provide hazard pay to their employees. And staff recommends council introduce an ordinance to require large grocery stores and large drugstores to provide hazard pay to their employees. Note that in order to pass the urgency ordinance, 5/7's vote is needed. If the urgency ordinance is adopted, it goes into effect immediately and is automatically repealed on July 11th unless earlier reenacted. If the regular ordinance is introduced, it will be brought back for adoption at council's April 26th meeting. And if adopted, will go into effect 30 days later on May 26th and will also expire on July 11th, 2021. This concludes staff's presentation. If there are any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Wong. Does staff have any, I see Councilmember Ready has a question?
Yes, thank you so much, Mayor. So could you go back to the questions and explain to me why we would adopt both an urgency and a regular ordinance? I don't understand that piece.
Sure, I'll take a first stab, and I'm, I'm sure our city attorney will also add to that. The urgency ordinance would take effect immediately.
Yes, I understand that. I just don't understand why we would do both.
Well, what, what we do, we do both because the urgency ordinance in relationship to the regular ordinance combined would last a total of 90 days. We are proposing at this point to have both, just as an approach that we think would be more, say, you know, less risky in terms of, say, if a lawsuit were presented to us. I think the city is well within its rights to go ahead and obviously adopt a regular ordinance requiring hazard pay. We just want to make sure that we have all of our bases covered in an event that there is a potential legal challenge. And I, I'll defer to our city attorney's office if they'd like to go ahead and add any additional information.
Thank you, Councilmember Ready, for the question. Really what we're doing, adopting something by urgency ordinance adds an argument in a potential legal challenge against the city that the, regarding the urgency measure. So the city council would need to make urgency findings. Your urgency ordinance already has the urgency findings and all of the evidence that supports those urgency findings. But all that, this, we call it the belt and suspenders approach of adopting both the urgency measure and the standard measure that goes into effect. It'll go into effect probably about, what is it, six weeks later or maybe a month later, is that that window that the city's urgency action could be attacked is much narrower. And then the standard adoption will supersede the urgency ordinance. So to the extent the city would be challenged and would, the, the complainant would be successful, we would only be vulnerable during a shorter window of time between the urgency's adoption and the standard adoption. I hope that helps.
Indeed it does. Thank you very much for that explanation.
Yes, thank you for the clarification. If there are no other council questions at this time, now we'll take public comment on this item. In order to see how many speakers we have tonight, I ask anyone who wishes to speak on this item, please raise your hand now. At this time, I have 13 hand raised, hands raised. Anyone wishing to speak to item 8A, which is hazard pay? The last item of the night for public comment. Actually, it's not, but that's okay. I see 14 hands raised for this item at this time. Okay, at this time.
Mayor, if I may, sorry.
Mayor, if I may, sorry, Ms. Vice Mayor Hale.
Yes, hi.
I just wanted to ask, because in the past, in the past, when we've had a late item like this, that would take us into 11 o'clock with the public comment, would we be shortening comment or would we be moving the council discussion? What would you propose?
Well, these people have been waiting here all night long, and I know that they'd probably like to speak. I was going to limit each member to two minutes, which would be 28 minutes. So it would be about a half an hour. And then if we need to extend the meeting, I mean, I think we kind of clearly understood we had two huge items to discuss this evening. So if the council is all right, is okay with that, I'd like to say they could speak for two minutes. They were patient and waited the whole evening to speak.
Mayor Howard. Mayor Howard, it's city manager.
Oh.
Can I just interject with an option?
Sure. I'm open for options.
Just thinking about how we have handled some other topics that have been taken up at this time of evening, you may want to consider ending the hearing at the, after the public comment and then resuming city council discussion in the future. You don't need to make that decision now, but given that we're likely to be needing to go past 11 for this item, that may be a consideration.
Yeah, I, my only concern would be our next meeting is the end of April, and there are people who are waiting to hear from us on this item, so. I, if people are willing to stay past 11, I'm okay with it. But if not, maybe what we should do is have council discussion and then public comment. Is that something?
No, I think it would probably be preferable to go in the order that you have, which is public comment first. But then either limit the amount of public comment or postpone the action to a future meeting.
Okay, I see. Council member Ready?
I just wanted to indicate that we are offering an urgency ordinance. So I'm just wondering if, if we could encourage our speakers to speak for only a minute if that, if that works for them, because they have a, an expected council here, and I, I would really, and so I'm, I'm hoping that we have an urgency ordinance, and I don't want it to be considered later.
And I would agree with you, and I was actually thinking of limiting it to one minute. But I see our city attorney has her hand raised, so I'd like to give her an opportunity to speak at this moment.
Thank you, Mayor. It's definitely well within your discretion on how you limit the comment. I do ask that we defer the discussion on how the council deliberates and whether this urgency merits you continuing the meeting or going past your 11 o'clock until after the pub, the public comment has been heard, and then the council can discuss what it would like to do next, as I believe, I don't remember if it was, city manager had, had mentioned.
You're muted, Mayor.
Yeah, we're having a reverb problem, so I have to keep muting and unmuting myself. I'm sorry. Council member Espinoza Garnica.
Yeah, I just want to have, share my comments on the idea of, of time. I definitely am also in favor of going over past 11. I really echo what, what council member Ready said, with this being urgent and everyone's very expectant of us. I don't want to delay it any further. We've definitely had council meetings that go real late, and I think this one just has so much. It's very important. I don't think we ought to wait any longer for this to be delayed. I really, and also like a full two minutes is just an extra 30, is 14 people, that's less than 30 minutes. So I mean, like, I think for the sake of today, I think we can go over time. I hope that we can all feel the same, at least.
Okay, Vice Mayor Hale?
Yeah, I agree with the urgency, but I also agree with Councilwoman Ready's recommendation for one minute, given the hour.
Okay, thank you. I would agree. And I'll just, I'll ask our speakers if in fact you could limit your comments to one minute if possible. We'd really appreciate it because we want to be sure we do get to this ordinance before the night is over. So I will start. I have 14 speakers. My last speaker is Jordan Grimes. That will be my last speaker of the evening. And my first speaker is Julie Lind, and my second speaker is Ryan Allen.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. I'm Julie Lind with the San Mateo Labor Council. While all of our numerous frontline workers are serving heroically and putting themselves into dangerous situations to deliver critical goods and services and have been since the onset of the pandemic, the motivation behind this for these workers specifically is rate of pay and degree of exposure. As was mentioned in the staff report, these large grocery and drugstores have made record profits during the pandemic. It's more equitable to distribute a portion of their increased profits to the frontline workers that have risked their own safety to serve their community. The community survey showed over two-thirds respondents being in support, with those in opposition listing their chief concern that this should have happened earlier in the pandemic, to which I counter, there's no time like the present. Legal challenges to similar ordinances have been unsuccessful, and the arguments raised by the Grocers Association are similar to the pushback you all that were on the council at the time received from naysayers raised relative to raising the minimum wage. This ordinance would merely reinstate hazard pay paid by many entities briefly last year, as profits remain high in the industry while the risk to these employees has yet to be measurably mitigated. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lind. Ryan Elaine, and then Richard Hedges.
Good evening. My name is Ryan Elaine. I'm speaking on behalf of the California Retailers Association. We also chair the statewide coalition called Californian for a Safe and Rapid Recovery, a coalition of nearly 50 national, statewide, and local organizations opposed to government-mandated premium pay ordinances like the one being considered here today in Redwood City. We respect Larry Janova on the $5 per hour premium pay ordinance. First and foremost, ordinance is not taking into consideration the fact that California's COVID-19 daily case rate is rapidly declining. Vaccinations will be available to every Californian over the age of 16 this week. Additionally, food retailers voluntarily increased pay and benefits by $17 billion nationwide in 2020. To say that we have not done our part is ignoring reality. Let me be clear, the grocery business operates on razor-thin margins, and premium pay ordinances like this have air impacts. Last year, an increase in sales. Last year, despite an increase in sales, the Food Industry Association reported that in 2020, profit margins were an average of only 2.5% because of added PPE costs and higher pay benefits for employees. In fact, City of L.A. Economic Impact Report found that government-mandated premium pay would eliminate all current profit margins for retailers, forcing them to reduce prices in closed stores.
Thank you, Mr. Elaine. My next speaker is Richard Hedges, and then Michael Solario.
Thank you very much, Mayor, and honorable city council members. We've had, in our local jurisdiction, over 3,500 people infected. Nationally, we've had 80,000 people infected. This is just in our union, and over 600 deaths. I'm asking you today to enact this urgency ordinance. There have been attempts to sue cities, Seattle's, the suit against Seattle was dismissed. South San Francisco, a city attorney told them that, told the city council that they were likely not to succeed with their lawsuit, so they went ahead and passed this ordinance. I prevail upon you to do the right thing. These people have been assaulted both verbally and physically at times, deserve this money, both for past, past dangers and present dangers. I'm not going to take any more of your time. I know you'll do the right thing. Thank you.
Thank you. My next speaker is Michael Solario, and then Rona Gundrum.
Hey, all. My name is Michael Solario, and I'm speaking in favor of this item. I think offering hazard pay is the least we could do to our frontline workers that risk their lives, that risk their families' lives, their housemates' lives. We are, it is, it was brought up that we're acting kind of late, but it's better that we do this now than never, because this is just another small payment that we're adding, which will help a lot. But it's nothing compared to their literally livelihoods that they've offered us. Thank you.
Thank you. My next speaker is Rona Gundrum, and then Emil.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Howard. I would like to encourage the city council to vote no on hazard pay ordinance. We are all eternally grateful to the essential grocery store and other workers, but the hazard pay ordinance has the potential for the lawsuit, which I think our dollars can be better spent on things other than attorney fees. There will be potential layoffs, higher prices, and store closings, and this has happened in other areas. I know of several in Southern California. This also leaves out essential workers in other industries. And I know that everybody's heart is in the right place with regard to the ordinance. However, it has the potential for extreme negative consequences.
Thank you. My next speaker is Emil, and then Clara Jackal.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Hi, I'd like to say that if we're grateful to our workers, we should pay them. I strongly support this ordinance, and it should go into effect immediately. Our essential workers are on the front lines of COVID-19, and they deserve extra pay plus much more. This ordinance is a great start, but we should also support workers who are getting left out, as my previous speaker mentioned. This, for example, many workers will not receive hazard pay because the strict employee limit is in place. And even though they're putting the same amount of work in and exposing themselves to the same amount of risk, workers must, these workers are not getting the proper payment. In addition, I'd like to see restaurant workers included in this emergency ordinance. These workers in this industry are facing an affordability crisis due to a lack of tips, and they are exposed to maskless individuals every day to the nature of their work. During this pandemic, essential workers have seen their pay stagnant or stagnant or deplete, even as their job duties have skyrocketed. And we should now, and we now expect our essential workers to fix sanitation issues and practice conflict resolution skills when customers refuse to follow COVID protocols. This emergency.
Thank you so much. My next speaker is Clara Jackal, and then Barbara Valley.
Yeah, I also want to speak in support of the ordinance and urge you to pass it. I'd like to point out that having a vaccine, having vaccine eligibility soon is not the same as having the vaccine actually available. We know that supply is short, and that people who may want to get it cannot get it immediately. And also, there are pandemic variants in play in our country, and therefore, we cannot consider the pandemic as close to over. Therefore, even though it would have been better to pass this earlier, it's still very much worth passing now. So I urge you to do that. Thank you.
Thank you. Barbara Valley, and then Ian W. Barbara, you just need to unmute yourself. Barbara? If you can hear me, you just need to unmute yourself.
I hear you. Thank you.
Okay.
I'm opposed to this hazard pay ordinance. I feel that the ordinance is exclusive in, in that it only applies to grocery and pharmacy workers, while many other workers over this past year have, have dealt with the same issues. I don't see how this can be considered equitable. The grocery and pharmacy workers that I've seen that most interact with the public are the cashiers. And early on in the pandemic, these individuals were wearing masks, face shields, and stood behind sheets of plexiglass. Customers were spaced six feet apart and making lines going practically the entire store. Government should not be telling businesses what wages and benefits they should offer. Minimum wage laws, of course, would be exempt in that they apply to everyone. Something I haven't seen addressed is what consequences are there for those who do not honor the ordinance? Thank you.
Thank you. My next speaker is Ian W., and then John Gomez.
Hi, my name is Ian. I very strongly urge the, the council to pass these ordinances for the reasons that several past speakers have mentioned. But I would urge it actually to be expanded. Several, some of the past speakers who were speaking against this used as an excuse for turning it down the fact that it didn't include everybody, when, you know, more than just people who worked at large grocery stores put their lives on the line to, to work during this pandemic. So rather than using that as an excuse to not do anything, we should actually expand this ordinance so that everybody who put themselves at risk to provide essential services during the pandemic should get the pay regardless of who they're, they work for. It's about workers who've been made to put their lives on the line, not about who they happen to work for. Thank you.
Thank you. John Gomez, and then Aaron Chaser.
Thank you, council, for the opportunity to speak tonight. You know, I want to speak in support of hazard pay tonight. You know, these workers have been at it since the beginning. You know, they're still at risk. Yes, you know, vaccines are becoming more available, and there is light at the end of the tunnel. But the simple fact of the matter is, a lot of grocery workers, majority of grocery workers have yet to receive their vaccine. And it's going to be, you know, a couple more months before we, we see the majority of grocery workers have the protection of the vaccine. You know, some, these companies can afford to pay the hazard pay. You know, in the 15 other cities that have passed this in Northern California, we haven't seen the store closures or the cut hours. So I urge the city council to make Redwood City the 16th city to pass hazard pay. Thank you for your time, and thank you for taking the time to take up this, this item. Thank you.
Thank you. Aaron Chaser, and then Brandon Enriquez.
Good evening. My name is Aaron Chaser, and I'm here with the San Mateo Labor Council. Thank you for bringing this item up again this evening. Our grocery and drugstore workers face among the highest risks of exposure to COVID-19. These essential workers have stepped up and kept our communities running, while being exposed to hundreds or thousands of people for every eight-hour shift, who may be carrying a deadly virus, who may or may not actually follow any of the safety precautions required by the law or by store policy. More than 2,000 members have already been lost to the pandemic from our UFCW Locals 5 and 648, which represent grocery and drugstore workers in this area. And the national infection rate for these workers is 20%. Meanwhile, as these workers face more and more risk, chain stores have continued to make record profits and pass none of it on to the workers. This item is extremely timely, and there is an urgency ordinance because this requires urgent action. Please follow the lead of your colleagues on Peninsula Cities and pass this hazard pay ordinance tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Brandon, Brandon Enriquez, and then my last speaker is Jordan Grimes.
Hello, council. Thank you for letting me speak. I am Brandon. I am co-chair of the Silicon Valley DSA, and I'm speaking in favor of this ordinance. In fact, I encourage the council to, in fact, lower the number of employees required than the 750 required. The fact is, is that grocery stores have been doing exponentially better during the, during the pandemic. Their profits have soared, because people need to go to groceries even during a pandemic. And the fact is, you know, the argument that, oh, they're going to go out of business is a lie. They're lying because they want to save their profits. I urge the council to stand with workers, not, and to protect them. And despite, you know, this being late, what better time than never? And as my, as previous commenters and my neighbors have mentioned, you know, it doesn't, even though this doesn't cover everybody, there's an opportunity to cover everybody. That shouldn't be an excuse to not pass this.
Thank you. And my last speaker is Jordan Grimes.
Yes, good evening again, council. I'll keep this brief since I know everyone wants to, wants to move on and go to bed. Jordan Grimes with Peninsula for everyone. Just wanted to comment in strong support of the hazard pay ordinance. Look, what we're talking about here is a little extra money for the most vulnerable among us, for already underpaid workers who have quite literally put their lives on the line every single day for the last year to ensure the rest of us had the ability to feed ourselves. This is frankly a no-brainer. It's the least we can do for those on the front line. I really hope you'll stand with workers and move this forward tonight. Thank you so much.
Thank you. I want to thank you all for your comments and for, thank you so much for staying with the one-minute time limit. If you arrived after I announced our last speaker, Mr. Grimes, and you weren't able to provide public comment, you can email your comments to our council at council@redwoodcity.org. Now I'd like to turn this over to council discussion at this point. I know that we've been wanting to get to this item. Who would like to begin the discussion? Council member Aguirre.
Mayor, thank you. Thank you to all the speakers for waiting into this late hour. I think that we should move forward with this. I'm ready to make a motion, and I'd like to support. And I'd like to support both an urgency ordinance and an ordinance. So I'm putting the motion out there, uh, to see if there's support from my colleagues. This is important in our community. We've been talking about it and as leaders in San Mateo County, I don't want to be behind.
All right, second.
Okay, a motion has been made to, uh, let me see, I guess that would answer the council questions, wouldn't it? Uh, adopt an urgency ordinance to require large grocery stores and large drugstores to provide hazard pay to their public-facing employees. And introduce an ordinance to require large grocery stores and large drugstores to provide hazard pay to their public-facing employees. Motion's been made by councilmember Aguirre and seconded by councilmember Ready. Discussion at this point. Uh, councilmember Espinoza Garnica.
Hi, yes, thank you. Um, so I was hoping to hear more from other councilmembers, but I actually, so it seems that folks may be on board with it as written. When I wrote it, I was hoping to get 300 employees, as some have already. And I think 750 isn't enough. We ought to do at least 500. Because after speaking with the San Mateo Labor Council, 750 is actually the outlier. And while it's not laid out, uh, as to who would be jeopardized by lowering it to, lowering it from 750, it was brought to council attention by the city manager that, uh, Chavez supermarket would be affected with the 500 ordinance because they have about 532 reported employees in their survey. And in the self-reported survey and also DeLuci's and the Key Market didn't report because they said they didn't know, which I think is very strange, one point. I think it's very strange that business owners don't know the amount of employees they have. Secondly, it was brought to my attention that, well, first let me start here. So in Northern California, there are about 14 cities already that have approved this, the housing ordinance. In our attached, um, one of the attachments shows four other California cities had approved, that have approved the ordinance. But if you looked at the others, um, it seems that there are five cities who pass ordinances with 300 being the threshold and seven cities pass an ordinance with 500 being the threshold. All these urgency ordinances, um, in Northern California alone and three cities in Northern California. Those being, um, let me look at this grid here. This was shared with me, um, with the director from the UFCW 5 Labor Council, uh, member, uh, and it seems like the city of San Mateo, Milbrae, and American Canyon were the only places in Northern California that approved 750. So it's an outlier. I know that Jeff G showed concern for Chavez supermarket and that was specifically mentioned. And I was reached out by the Latinx Dem Club co-chair as well. But as commentators already said, these, uh, markets are doing really well during the pandemic. The attachments I, I included when I first wrote the ordinance as a referral, shows how much they were making. They were making an increased amount of profit, like a huge amount of profit during the pandemic because of the closure of restaurants and other places. And I understand as a caregiver myself that I deserve to get paid better. You know, but the thing about caregivers is that they don't have agencies that are turning record profits the way, these big chains are. So of course it's a lot easier to pass a hazard pay on some, on grocery stores because they're doing a lot better. They're making, they're making even more money during the pandemic. The same can't be said for all industries like caregiving. Um, and so, yeah, I only make $19 an hour. I definitely would love to get paid something for working with my client one-on-one. But I, this is something that I think is a compromise, um, just to start. Because again, as mentioned by the director, uh, officer from Labor Council, Julie Lind, they mentioned how, um, this is about those with the highest amount of exposure with the least, like the lowest pay. So this is why it's, it's, um, you know, targeting grocery store and drugstore workers. So there's the most amount of money there. The reason that we need stuff like this is because we have a poverty issue. So we definitely need to make lots of more, uh, policy changes. City council is going to have to spend more time passing more than two policy changes a year in order to start doing something about the poverty that we have. Okay? So these, this is an ordinance that's affecting big chains. Um, and also an issue that is, that I wanted to raise is that Chavez supermarket is, is, um, is reporting 530 and 32 employees. But it's been brought to my attention that in the city of San Mateo, while union reps were trying to organize their workers there for hazard pay, Chavez supermarket was arguing for 700. They were arguing for an 800-plus ordinance because 750 would qualify them. So at the time, they said that they had at least 750 employees. So since this is a self-reported survey, there's no real accuracy that's, um, that can be confirmed for us. The number we chose is conservative and outlier. I think Chavez supermarket is kind of either being dishonest or made a huge clerical error. But we need to pass an ordinance for the workers that starts at 500 because that would include these big chains. Again, Chavez supermarket is also known to be anti-union. I know that they are like one of the only Latinx supermarkets that we have, but just because they are a Latinx private business, does that mean it's a pro-Latinx, pro-Brown, pro-immigrant, uh, business, you know? And I think that's perhaps some of what informs public perception and council perception that I really want us to be critical about. It's that perhaps we're a little afraid to scrutinize, um, the layer, just like the, the, the superficial layer. Oh, it's presenting as progressive because we have now people of color in business. It's kind of like having people of color as cops. It's not really changing the system. It's just changing the face a bit. So, um, uh, yes, I'm, I hope I can keep going because ultimately that's.
I want to be sure that everyone has a chance to speak and it's 10 to 11 now. So, um, would it be okay if I allowed others to speak?
Yes, yes, absolutely.
Raised.
Yeah, absolutely. Um, but I just wanted to bring that to attention because I feel that there are opinions about Chavez supermarkets since it was brought up directly, but.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate that. Um, councilmember Aguirre and then councilmember Ready.
Mayor, I just lowered my hand from earlier. Thank you.
Oh.
Sorry.
That's okay. And councilmember Ready, your hand.
Thank you. I, uh, thank you, mayor. I just wanted to make the point that we jeopardize the urgency ordinance if we make any major edits. Um, I would have preferred to have reduced the, uh, 750 to 500, but it was my fear that we would jeopardize the urgency ordinance if I suggested such an edit. Thank you.
I, I'd like to ask the city attorney that to confirm that because I did have a question about 500 versus 750. But if that in fact was to be changed, that would probably not be able to be voted on tonight. Is that correct?
No, so to, for tonight, if the council was interested in adopting an urgency ordinance and introducing a standard ordinance that, um, regulated employers with 500 employees nationwide rather than 750, you can definitely make the motion to make those changes. And, um, I will, I can make all of the changes throughout the ordinance so that it's then regulating any employers with 500 employees nationwide, um, rather than 750. I think I, maybe where councilmember Ready was going is you need five out of seven votes. And, and so that is a question for the council. But, uh, if the council is interested in a modified ordinance, that's something that can happen tonight. For that modification, any more substantive edits may, we may not be able to introduce because we don't have the language prepared for you.
If I could ask, um, my colleagues to, um, um, voice an opinion about that 500, then I will, um, um, ask for an edit to our motion.
Okay, I see councilmember G has his hand raised.
Thank you, Mayor Howard, and, and a couple of thoughts. First, thank you to staff for all the work they've done since the last council meeting that this was brought forward. Second, thank you to councilmembers who did reach out to employers to try to talk with them and to get their input. I will raise a difference is that not all stores are the same. You know, I got two stores to talk to, probably one of the largest stores in Redwood City and also probably one of the largest format stores in the national chain. As well as I got to talk to one of the smallest stores at less than 4,000 square feet. The business that you can generate in 4,000 square feet versus the business you can generate in 100,000 square feet, there's about 96,500 square feet difference. And to suggest that you can do the same revenue and the same profit margin in the same stores and they're that far apart in size, I challenge every one of you to justify that you can't serve the same and produce the same results. I think the last time we talked about this, the, the desire was to go out and get information and get the facts. And so thank you all for doing that. I would be opposed to lowering the threshold to 500. I said at the last meeting, if you wanted to pass an or urgency ordinance, I'd be happy with 1,000 employees nationwide excluding, excluding franchises and small local businesses. Um, so, you know, I think we did go find the facts. I'm comfortable with the motion that was made. It addresses many of the concerns I had. But I would oppose any changes to lowering the threshold or I would seek another amendment to address the size of the stores and exclude the small stores that are locally operated. Thank you, Mayor Howard.
Thank you. Uh, before we continue, I'd like to ask for an extension to, uh, 11:15. Uh, hopefully we can finish before then. Uh, could I get a motion in a second to continue the meeting to 11:15?
Second. I move that we extend to 11:15.
A second.
Okay, and do we need a roll call vote, please?
Do. Um, councilmember G.
Yes.
Councilmember Ready.
Yes.
Councilmember Aguirre.
Yes.
Councilmember Espinoza Garnica.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hale.
Yes.
And Mayor Howard.
Yes.
The motion passes with six votes.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Hale, you have your hand up next.
Yes, um, uh, a few, few additions to make to the conversation. So first is, uh, one of the members of council was quoting Ms. Lind and she is in the audience. So I was wondering if we could perhaps ask her for her thoughts on the size, um, since she was being directly quoted. I believe she's still here.
Julie Lind, uh, let me see here. Think I saw, yes, there she is. Ms. Lind, go ahead. Did you hear the question?
I did. Um, Vice Mayor Hale Hale asked for my thoughts on the store size.
Size.
Um, and I had had many conversations with council throughout the last several months relative to this ordinance. Um, and while councilmember Espinoza Garnica is correct in her listing of the various sizes and other ordinances locally, of the four that have passed, we have two at 750 and two at 500. Uh, San Mateo, city of San Mateo did deliberately include Chavez supermarket. That was a discussion that they had had when they looked at their size. They're one of the 750s. Um, and for Redwood City, for some of the reasons mentioned, um, and referring back to some conversations I have, I do feel that it's appropriate for Chavez, given their size and profit margins to be included, but not at the expense of the ordinance. I'd like to see this passed by council as an urgency ordinance as well as the regular. Um, and I don't get the feeling that were this to change, that we would have the appropriate threshold to have that be successful. So on behalf of the Labor Council, um, I'm supportive of the ordinance as written.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Lind. Um, I'll keep my comments brief. I don't think this is a vote about 500 versus 750. I think this is a vote about are we going to get an urgency ordinance or not? Um, an urgency ordinance has a very high threshold of findings and votes. We need five votes. We have one council member absent. So we have to hit the five votes, um, to provide that, what was it called? Not bootstraps, um, suspenders, belt suspenders.
Suspenders and.
There we go.
Suspender's broach.
Some accessory, um, to provide that level of, of, of security, which I think is very important, um, for the integrity of the city. So I'm supportive of the ordinance as written, of the motion in the second. Um, I had suggested that we go out and speak with the businesses ourself. I personally spoke with three. I spoke with, um, Costco, Whole Foods and Target. And I was very surprised to hear how supportive they were because their workers are working multiple jobs and they're having a hard time filling their shifts. And, you know, to the folks in the audience who said, well, why not this industry or that industry? Bring me an ordinance about those industries and I will vote on that ordinance too. Because these are the people who are truly at the front lines and it is, it is the, at the bottom of Maslow's hierarchy. It's food. It's giving you food so that you can eat during this pandemic. So I'm completely in support of it. And I would like to see us, uh, move this forward urgently, uh, in the next few minutes before we hit our expiration at 11:15.
Exactly. I, I just want to say I did speak with several, uh, stores myself and I was very pleased to hear how, they said they're having trouble attracting employees, that it's really, it's just really difficult to find people to work and they would be so grateful to have it mandated because some of them are doing it already and they'd like to see everyone doing it so we get more employees to come to this area and work. So I was glad we did that survey. I was really pleased with that. Uh, I have councilmember Espinoza Garnica.
Yeah, clarifying question. So like, if I make a motion the way I want it to, um, like I personally don't want this to be sabotaged either. So I just want the procedure to be figured out. So I would like to make a motion for 500. Um, and if that doesn't pass, we can still have a motion by others for 750.
We do have a motion on the floor right now. I do believe.
Oh, I forgot. I'm sorry. Um, if so, um, the motion.
But we do have a motion right now. Motion was made by councilmember Aguirre for, to adopt the urgency ordinance as well as the regular ordinance. And it was seconded by councilmember Ready. And if we're ready, we can vote on that. And if it does not pass, then you could make another motion.
So if it, but, so like last time I wanted to make an amendment, we had time for discussion, right? So, um, if I want to make amendment, like if I want to make it to be different, what procedure do I follow?
Well, you could ask the maker of the motion and the maker of the motion could accept or not. And that then it would have to be accepted by the seconder of the motion.
Oh, okay. And the seconder was, um.
Councilmember Ready, so.
Okay, thank you. Um, okay, councilmember Aguirre and councilmember Ready, would you be in favor of an amendment to? I initially had two, honestly. One was to make it retroactive as well for two weeks just because as everyone mentioned in the comments, this is very late notice as well and anything would be beneficial. I hope that we can get at least that, the retroactive for two weeks, just because people deserve it. And, um, would you be interested in a, in another amendment for 500?
So let me clarify that I already attempted to amend our motion to 500 and I didn't get the votes that we needed.
Oh.
And we need five votes and I don't have five votes. So that's why we're continuing to try to get this motion with 750 passed.
I'm so sorry, councilmember Ready. I think I must have space with it going on. Um, I'm sorry to repeat what your motion.
There's, there's a lot going on, that's for sure. But at this time, the recommendation and the, um, motion is to adopt what's before you on the screen, which is the urgency ordinance and the regular ordinance.
Can we also introduce the amendment that I introduced as the two weeks?
Not without the motion of, not without the approval of the person who made the motion.
Can I ask the question to?
That would be councilmember Aguirre.
Yes, I'm so sorry if you're not saying councilmember. Councilmember Aguirre, um, would you be in favor of this amendment?
And can you, can you, um, explain it a little bit? You, you meant two weeks going.
Yeah. So when I originally proposed it, um, it had a retroactive recommendation. And then it was brought to my attention by city council, or sorry, city attorney. And I think probably city manager that it was unique for South City. No one has a retroactive pay. But South City had reasons for delaying their hazard pay vote. And so they made it retroactive to the time they were. Um and so they made it retroactive to the time they were initially going to vote on it. So essentially it got postponed and there was a retroactive pay for that reason. But I was wondering, I, this wasn't brought up in my one-on-one session, if it was, there was anything barring us from doing a retroactive hazard pay for two weeks because it is so late notice and people do deserve at least some type of um funding, like emergency. Like this, what I think of is like some emergency extra money costs for like having to go to the doctor or childcare and, you know, this kind of stuff.
With that, Councilmember.
I really appreciate. Thank you so much for your time, everyone.
And I don't know if the second of the motion is.
So the only concern I have is the same that I expressed before. Um by um there, there was concern when I asked about retroactive pay, whether it was going to um jeopardize us in any way as a city. Um um and will it jeopardize the motion?
Um I, I was going to say, the reason South San Francisco did retro is because they were supposed to vote on it and then it was delayed. So they retroed it back to the time that they were hoping that they could have voted for it. No other city has done that as far as I'm aware of in San Mateo County. So I would be a little uncomfortable doing something that no one else has done. Uh I, I, I mean, we're really trying to do something that's a little out of the box and necessary and I don't want to jeopardize it in any way. So I would like to vote for the ordinance as it is. But the uh, we do need a, a full vote uh in order to get this passed. So um I I'm hearing uh Councilmember G, would you like to chime in here or Vice Mayor Hale, whichever?
I'll defer to Vice Mayor Hale. She had her hand up first.
Okay.
I just wanted to hear from the city attorney on this matter.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Hale. Um so as the mayor mentioned, the South San Francisco um ordinance is the only one that I'm aware of um in the entire state that's retroactive. Uh so no other city has adopted an ordinance retroactively and uh the facts in South San Francisco are not the same facts we have today. Today is the first opportunity that this city council has had to introduce an ordinance. Um so with that, I would say it would be more of an uphill battle for the city of Redwood City to defend retroactive pay.
Thank you. And that, it does make me less comfortable as well. I spoke with um the members of the South San Francisco Council and that was consistent story with what they had shared. It was just a different set of circumstances. It wasn't just retroactive, um for retroactive sake, which I would love to make happen. But again, we don't have the facts and findings to support that.
Thank you. Councilmember Jeff G.
Thank you, Mayor Howard. Um I I am supportive of the motion that was originally made, not with the amendment. I believe with the staff recommendation, it balances the need to do something urgently as well as preserves and balances the legal challenges that may come. Uh adding the retroactive, I think exposes, adds an added risk to the city for legal challenge. Uh I would not be in favor of the retroactive um addition to the motion.
Okay, thank you. Um. Councilmember Aguirre, um did you have something to, you'd like to say to your motion?
Yes, um given the explanation um and the clarity from our city attorney, I think I would stake with my original motion and I know we have a second. And uh Councilmember, uh Lisette, I hope that you, you understand why we would go back to have at least less liability in moving forward it. And I think this is an important step, although having it retroactively would have been um ideal. I don't think um we will have the votes for it, so I would stick to my um original motion.
Yeah, if I can interject, I raised my hand because I I also can, could tell from the council. Um and thank you for the discussion, everyone, uh before the motion, just to um. Yeah, definitely wouldn't want to sacrifice the urgency and hazard pay ordinance. So uh yeah, I wanted to remove that as well, since it wasn't going to pass.
Thank you. I I really appreciate the discussion also. It it's, it's good that we all understand and and uh it's nice coming to consensus like that. So I would say the motion in the second is on the floor and could we have a roll call, please?
Yes, let's start with Councilmember Ready.
Yes.
Councilmember Aguirre.
Yes.
Councilmember Espinoza Garnica.
Yes.
Councilmember G.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hale.
Yes.
And Mayor Howard.
Yes.
The motion passes with six votes. Councilmember Smith is absent this evening.
Thank you very much and thank you, everyone who was here this evening to speak on this issue. Thank you so much. Moving on to item eight B, it's the oral update on the city's response to novel coronavirus, COVID nineteen. And our city manager Melissa Stevenson Diaz will give a verbal update on the city's COVID nineteen efforts.
Good evening. Thank you, Mayor and Council. In light of the hour, I'd like to defer most of this, but I would like to move to slide five if we could. I just want to give some important information that there is now available. Thanks to support from our Parks and Recreation staff, a free COVID nineteen testing site at the Community Activities Building every Tuesday and Thursday. And that's an important and time-sensitive update that I wanted to provide. And then the second one would be, if you could please go to slide eight. I would like to provide focus that there's good information available about protections to renters and support for landlords as well by going to the state website of housing.ca.gov. We also will be mailing postcard to the city, to all households in the city to provide information about housing-related resources. Um there's other information that I'll share at the next meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Diaz. I appreciate that. Um can people find that this information on our city website also?
I believe so, and if not, I'll make sure that's added. Thank you.
Maybe a number of your slides, if it was put on our website, people could go through it at their leisure and and learn more because there's so much good information. I'm sorry we didn't have more time, but next time we'll try to make that time. Um now we can take public comment on this item if I have any speakers who wish to speak to this. Anyone who wishes to speak at this time, if you could raise your hand. I see one speaker, Mr. Devin McNaughton, excuse me, Ms. Devin McNaughton, I'm sorry. Did you want to? I think I scared her away. Okay, I'm sorry. There don't seem to be any speakers at this time. Okay. Uh Councilmember Ready. Your hand is up. We have uh no public speakers, so I will close the public comment period. And then moving on to item number nine, rushing things along. Item nine, uh City-Owned Property Ad Hoc Committee. I was going to ask if um our city manager wouldn't mind, do you have a report to give? I don't have those notes in front of me. I'm sorry.
Certainly, Mayor Howard, I'll just um share that the City-owned Property Committee met on March thirtieth and thirty-first um related to discussions about a potential property exchange with the county.
Thank you. And does anyone else have any meetings that they would like to report out on?
Uh forgive me, Mayor, I um for some reason my raised the hand um is not working. But I have um uh I just wanted to report that I'm a member of the Regional Impact Council Steering Committee and we've been working on our regional responses to homelessness for several months. And tomorrow, homelessness is the result of systemic racism and economic inequality. And um tomorrow, All Home California is hosting a webinar um at nine o'clock. And um you can join the webinar with, um so the Facebook um is there, the Facebook by getting onto their Facebook page. And I encourage anyone who's interested in um finding out um what we might do to end homelessness. The goal, the very bold goal, is to end homelessness in the nine Bay Area uh counties by seventy-five percent in three years. And so I urge people to check this out, um to find out what those bold suggestions are. Thank you so much for letting me report on, report on this.
Thank you. Uh Councilmember G, we have three minutes. Is that okay?
Uh that's quite fine, Mayor Howard. Thank you, Mayor Howard and council colleagues. I'd just like to ask, maybe perhaps in the next meeting toward the end, when we come to council member reports, that I may have five minutes to report and share with the tremendous amount of transportation work and planning underway in the region. Uh it's the lateness of the hour and the time doesn't permit me to cover it in any decent service. But I think council and our community needs to be aware, there's a tremendous amount of planning underway on regional transportation and they deserve to be updated on what's going on. So thank you.
Yes, uh I'll make sure that we get that on the agenda because I know that there is a great deal going on and surveys are available for us to fill out. So I want to be sure we don't miss any deadlines on that. So we'll make sure at our meeting on April twenty-sixth that we make that time for you. I'll be in touch with you, Councilmember G. Okay, I think at this point, it would be time to adjourn and I'd like to adjourn tonight in memory of a dedicated educator, accomplished lawmaker and champion in public service, Gene Mullen, who was a state assemblyman and former mayor of South San Francisco. He passed away earlier this week at the age of eighty-three. The former state representative, mayor of South San Francisco and local teacher, he'd been diagnosed with cancer three years ago and he died Monday, April fifth, in his South San Francisco home. Gene Mullen introduced himself to his local community as a government teacher in the South San Francisco Unified School District with the role that he maintained for thirty-two years. He was a man of integrity and ethics, whose gentle style coupled with a sharp intellect made per for perceptive and effective advocate. He helped shape South San Francisco physically as a member of the Planning Commission, paving the way for what is now an economic powerhouse in the biotech industry. Throughout his years of service, he also fostered inclusivity that opened doors for other leaders. He coached basketball, helped lead his district's teachers' union, received recognition as the San Mateo County Teacher of the Year in nineteen ninety-one. With hopes of inspiring his students to take greater interest in their hometown, Gene Mullen was appointed to the South San Francisco Planning Commission in nineteen seventy-two. He was a working, he was working as a commissioner when they welcomed Genentech, which has transformed their city and their region and established South City as the birthplace of biotechnology. He went on to serve on the South San Francisco City Council from nineteen ninety-five to two thousand and two, serving twice as mayor. He then set his sights on the state legislature and served three terms before leaving office in two thousand and eight. He had a reputation for remarkable consistency in the assembly. He was the only member that never missed a committee vote and he cast approximately eleven thousand votes in his six years in office. His colleagues referred to him as the Cal Ripken Junior of the legislator, evoking the Baltimore Orioles shortstop who broke Lou Gehrig's record of two thousand one hundred and thirty-one consecutive games played. As a lawmaker, Gene was most passionate about reducing the voting age to enhance youth engagement on political matters, as well as affordable housing, childcare expansion and advocacy for the life sciences industry. He taught summer programs for Sacramento State University, authored books on local government and produced educational videos. His public service expanded into the non-private sector as well. He was a board member for many local organizations such as the San Mateo County Historical Society, HIP Housing, HIP Housing, the South San Francisco Library Foundation, Bay Bio and Seton Medical Center. He's preceded in death by his wife Terry, his son Kevin Mullen, who is currently the Speaker Pro Tem of the State Assembly. Services will be private, but contribution to Gene Mullen's memory may be made to the South San Francisco Community Learning Center via the South San Francisco Library Foundation. As stated by Gene's son, Assembly Speaker Pro Tem Kevin Mullen, his legacy on civic engagement lives on through the lives of his legions of students as well as his children and his grandchildren. He was a lovely man and he will be greatly missed. So I'd like to adjourn in his memory and all those in favor, or do we call a roll call? Nope, we can just adjourn in his memory, which is so appropriate. Thank you so much. Good night, everyone. Stay safe.